No, he's pulling up now.
Did we get it out?
Yeah, we got it out. It's a Facebook page now.
Recording in progress.
Hey, good evening, everybody. This is a work session of Greenbelt City Council. My name is Emmett Jordan. I'm the mayor.
Kristen Weaver, Mayor Pro Tem.
Jenny Poppy, council member.
Mayor.
Daniel McKenny, council member.
Amy Nistel, council member.
Rodney Roberts, city council.
Okay, any information items for the end of the meeting? Well, hearing none, let's go ahead and get started. First, I just want to say, we do hold these council work sessions on Mondays and Wednesdays several times a month to exchange information with community stakeholder groups, so to gather information from staff, advisory boards, residents. No votes or formal actions are taken at work sessions. Our work sessions and meetings are always open to the public, except for executive sessions as authorized by state law, so that our residents and others can observe council's deliberations. We do strive to provide reasonable opportunities for the public to voice opinions on matters being considered, and we'll pause periodically for public comment. I think we'll pause every 30 minutes, like at about 8 o'clock, 8:30, to take substantial public comment. During these times, if you wish to address council or city administration, if you have a question, just raise your hand if you're in the room. After being recognized, please go to the podium, state your name and where you live in the city of Greenbelt. We need that for the minutes. If you're on Zoom, you can use the Q&amp;A tab to submit a question, or you can raise your virtual hand, and after being recognized, we'll promote you so that you can speak. And if you're watching on YouTube or on the city's cable TV channel, you can send an email to questions@greenbeltmd.gov. So as we pause for public comment, please, you know, just limit your remarks to three to five minutes and speak on one topic related to the question under consideration. And we have asked that you avoid questioning the motives of others. And in general, we all strive to be civil in the way that we converse. We're all neighbors here. So tonight, it's a work session, yes, Mayor Pro Tem.
I'm not sure the, I don't know if the video's showing up on Zoom. It looks like it's showing up on Facebook, but I'm not seeing the council room video on Zoom.
Okay, well, we'll work on that. So tonight is a budget work session. We've been, you know, going through the city manager's proposed budget for 2025, as we do every year, and this has got to be the eighth or ninth work session. We had a public hearing at the last council meeting, so we're headed down the home stretch. But tonight, we're talking public safety. And as most folks know, public safety is the largest chunk of the city's budget. It's more than 25%. It's probably about 30 some odd percent. So as a resident said in an email just today, you know, what other city services are crucial if our residents do not feel safe? So this is a very important discussion, and I anticipate that we'll bring up some difficult questions and have a substantial conversation tonight. I'd like to introduce our city manager, Jose Samorón. How are you doing, Mr. Samorón?
I'm great, Mr. Mayor. We've had a busy afternoon with public safety-related matters.
Yeah, do you want to say anything about that?
Absolutely, absolutely. You know, it's, we're excited to announce that we've made some arrests on the two suspects related to the Sham Hill shootings. At the same time, it's heartbreaking that we're talking about kids committing these crimes. So it's been a difficult afternoon for us, but we've made arrests and we're happy that we've done so. It's challenging. It raises questions about, you know, what we're doing as a society, that we have children who have access to guns and children committing these kind of crimes.
It's unconscionable. So as I said during the press conference, you know, I just want to express council's deep appreciation to the Greenbelt Police Department, to the first responders who were there on site, administering emergency first aid, which may have actually saved one of the victim's lives. And, you know, the partnership with the county and the state, the sheriff's office, the FBI, the ATF, it's just everybody kind of pitching in together, because these types of events, they cannot continue to happen. So we've got two suspects, 14 and 16 years old. What were they doing with guns? What were they doing out of school? What were their parents? It's just...
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, for that recognition. We're blessed that we had officers already at the scene in response to a proactive approach to manage this situation. I wholeheartedly believe that if our officers were not in scene, I think things would have turned out worse. So I'm grateful for Police Chief Bowers, Deputy Chief White, and their proactiveness and how they resolve crime and address community needs. And I think this budget before you represents how that proactive approach is outlined. It includes funding for the crisis intervention team. Something was funded from ARPA. This now brings it into our operational budget, and we make that commitment through general fund money.
Yeah, and the fact that the public safety budget is by far the largest chunk of the budget is a reflection of council and the residents of Greenbelt, our commitment to making sure that our police department, our fire department, and our other first responders are adequately funded. So City Treasurer Bertha Gaiman, welcome. You know, you are the, you are the person that sort of melds all these different pieces of the budget together into a coherent piece. You're making sure that everything balances out, all the Is are crossed and the Ts are dotted. So any comments on public safety budget?
Well, tonight, they're definitely my favorite team, as they came to my rescue, as my alarm was going off when I arrived this afternoon. But anyway, yes, public safety, again, folks on the street, we can see what they do and work very closely with Chief Bowers and Tim White, Deputy, what's his title? Deputy Chief White, to make sure they have what they need, because they have a very hard job, as we've been going through, as we just heard about. So it's just a lot going on, and so we want to make sure they have all the ammunition, all the safety gear, everything, cars, everything that they need. And I think, I think we did a pretty good job working together to make sure it's listed in this budget.
Yeah, council listens to the police department. Council listens to the fire department. So, you know, we, we take our cues on making up, reviewing the budget, and making modifications based on what we're told by the professionals. So just to kick things off, we do have the fire department here, and I'd like to actually bring them up. Mr. Gelati and Chief Tommy Ray, would you like to just come up for a couple of minutes? Actually, for as long as it takes. So thank you very much. You know, thank you for everything you do. It was, it was a pleasure being at the Greenbelt Volunteer Fire and Rescue Squad banquet last Saturday. So in the budget on page 156, what we've got listed there are contributions to a long-term capital outlay, to kind of being prepared. You know, if opportunity comes up, you know, knock on wood, for a better facility, that's something we're committed to. So just wanted to kind of give you an opportunity, if there's anything you want to say about the equipment, about the relationship with the county, about, you know, really about the relationship with the county, because I know sometimes, you know, what we do as volunteers and what we do as a city, just in terms of providing the facility and investing in the equipment, isn't quite enough. You know, we do, that partnership with the county is very, very important. So welcome. Is there anything you want to say?
Thank you, Mayor, and rest of the city council, Pro Tem, and city manager. Thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight on behalf of the Greenbelt Volunteer Fire Department Rescue Squad Incorporated and Ladies Auxiliary. And to my left is President Greg Gelati. Yeah, so our budget, and we definitely appreciate the support that we get from the city and the contributions they provide us for apparatus replacement and building maintenance aspect as well. So I don't know if y'all received this or not. I had the opportunity last month to sit down with the city manager and discuss a couple of things and go over some needs and some concerns. And tonight, you know, I'll just go over it briefly, because I know it's going to be a long evening for y'all, so I won't take up much of your time. So recently, we just purchased a utility truck for $80,000 that replaced our 2005 utility truck with over 100,000 miles on it. And so it was in need to be replaced. Our next big purchase will be to replace our 2014 fire engine in 2029 for an estimated cost of $800 to almost $1 million.
Going to replace it completely, or are you going to refurbish the chassis?
It's more beneficial just to replace it. I mean, the time you refurbish and stuff like that, you're almost spending just about as much, and the county puts a standard in there, after a certain amount of years, it can't be utilized anyway, so it's more beneficial just to replace it. And you look at that cost, almost $1 million. That's a lot of money, especially when I first started, you know. A fire engine was only like $200,000. So you can see, now I've got a little bit over 30 years in the fire service, so in that short time, that's how much it increased. Our cheese buggy is up for replacement next year. That's based on mechanical needs, and normally, when it hits 100,000, we've replaced our vehicles, for our support vehicles. So that's still up in the air. I mean, if it needs to be replaced, that's, it's going to be replaced sometime in the upcoming future.
Is this about the county changing the distribution, EMS funding? Because most of the runs the fire department does, what is about?
So 90% of what we do today is EMS-related, and now there's a proposed general order out there, the county fire chief is putting out. So it's on change to distribution funds. It used to be four categories, 25% broken down in four different ways. 25% if you own it, 25% if you fuel and maintain it, and 25% for each personnel on a unit. So at Greenbelt, we own both of our transport units, so when the county are operating it, they get 50%, we get 50%. And then when our BLS amants, we get 100%, because that's fully staffed by volunteers. With that mentioned, with them changing the distribution funds, we don't think it's feasible to allow them to utilize our, our transport unit, due to the fact, you know, it costs us money, and if they're not taking funds away, you know, where do we get them funds from? So we're, you know, have them put their own transport unit in, we'll maintain our other transport unit for the volunteers to operate. And I think, you know, that will stay on line for what we're receiving in our budget to stay, you know, at that benchmark.
Let's post it on that, and we'll, you know, the city manager will support your initiative. That's, that's a big deal.
Yes, yes.
So they're strictly using ours? They don't have any of their own vehicles there, right?
Right now, they have their own county PA unit. So they're running that right now, and we're running our BLS amants that we own for the volunteers to operate. So I keep everybody posted on that. And also, you can see that we got a reduction in our station program management funds, $7,000. This is the second year in a row that they decreased our budget. So we went from $22,000 to $15,000 a year. You know, with things going up in society, you know, you figure you'll increase your budget, not decrease your budget. So that just, you know, adds on to, you know, our belief on, you know, have the county run their own apparatus, that they're responsible for fueling and maintaining and maintenance and all that good stuff, and, you know, we'll focus on running, you know, our units and, you know, and fuel and maintain, or not fuel, because the county provides the fuel, but the maintenance for tools and stuff like that, that we're responsible for.
See, a lot of accomplishments, you know, knock on wood, we haven't, to the best of my knowledge, haven't had any real big fires in Greenbelt. But yeah, it's important for folks to realize that, you know, our volunteers and the career folks, they, we respond to any call, so it's not just Greenbelt, it's Berwin Heights, it's College Park, it's Glendale, it could be Laurel or Beltsville.
Yeah, so our response area has increased since they changed the motto on how we get dispatchable calls, and now it's GPS-based. So that increased our, our response area. So we respond second due, as in the second piece of apparatus, all the way down to 450 off 95. So we have a huge response area that we, yes, respond to, just not just in the city of Greenbelt.
Yeah, all the more reason why the county vehicles, they should be supplying the vehicles if they're not going to be even-handed with giving us enough to, you know, cover the cost of maintaining the vehicles, if we're responding all the way down to 450.
Absolutely. And also, you know, unfortunately, when we do get in accidents, and if it's a career personnel drive, regardless if it's a career person, you know, that, that costs us $1,000 deductible of our insurance that we, the volunteer corporation, is responsible for. We don't get reimbursed by the county if it's county personnel, so that's just another expense that we take on for the personnel utilizing our apparatus.
What is the, what's, did it give you any reason why they reduced your budget? I mean, it just doesn't make any sense, so I'm just wondering, did they, did they say anything, or?
Only thing I got from the county is the volunteer participation. These funds are not used strictly for volunteers, it's to supplement the station needs, regardless if it's career and volunteer in the station, the station still operates 24/7. So those funds help support that. Furniture, supplies for the units itself, equipment, and upkeep of the station. So regardless how many volunteers we have, the funds shouldn't have been reduced, because it's staffed around the clock.
I mean, everything's going up, so how can you reduce? I mean, it just doesn't make any sense. I think we need to have a meeting with them.
One of the things that Chief and I discussed is, in one of the future near council meetings, we want to have a letter approved by council that we're sending off to the, to the county addressing the transport unit and other needs that Chief Ray has identified.
By all means, yeah, we should definitely do that.
Definitely should do that.
Yes, I just, for number six, is there another number? I see your number from 2023 was 26, or $276,000. Do you have a number from 2022 that I can compare that to? I just, that number alone doesn't really mean anything to me. Was it an increase or a decrease?
EMS transport collection funds is, which was based off on that percentage of 25% of four different categories. So we used to get a report monthly. You can see that report stopped. So right now, that was our last report, and out of them funds, we also supplement out of that the cost to operating the transport units. So the fuel and maintenance comes out of that budget, so it fluctuates.
So this is all a county pro, so the EMS transport fee collection program, that's a county program or a state program?
It's a county program. It used to be, when we first started, individual corporations used to maintain their own, and I guess the county saw how loose their, it was, so they took over. And then, you know, we got decreased in what we receive in coming in, and this new general order is on a, put even more damper on that, because the way it's written right now, that you can't even utilize them funds to repurchase amants. So it don't make sense if we're, you know, collecting this money for EMS, how come we can't purchase, you know, another transport unit with the funds there?
Yeah, it's, it's like a reimbursement fund, like a differential, where we, you know, our fire company in the city are providing the services, and the county, you know, kicks back some of the funding. So this is really disturbing here. Hopefully, the reports may have stopped. Hopefully, the money is still flowing, because that was an issue, that they were really pretty far behind in, in providing these funds.
Yeah, so I don't know what exactly what's in the account right now. I know we do, not quarterly, but, you know, roughly around that quarterly timeframe, we submit bills that we accumulate from, you know, operating the transport units, to then they get reimbursed.
Thank you for this information. I do think the city will want to send a letter. We need to talk about it a little bit, and maybe meet with the chief, or meet with folks over there to find out, well, just to, to talk a little bit, and just reassert the fact, you know, we provide this equipment, we provide these services, not just to Greenbelt, but to the whole response area, and, you know, we just need to work together. Council member.
Sorry, for number four, you talked about the reduction in the budget from $22,000 to $15,000. Is that a standard number that all volunteer houses get, or is it vary from house to house? I'm, I'm just wondering how that, how they come up with that number?
It's very interesting how they came up with that number. We, we asked, and we don't know how they came up with that calculations. So the max that each corporation can receive is $40,000 in that budget. And so I guess the stronger the corporation is with volunteers, they get close up to that. Across the board, it used to be $22,000. Everybody got the same amount across the board regardless. But just like I said, two years ago, they changed that status, and that's when we received our deduction in funds.
I'm just wondering if there's ways that the council can advocate for our, this budget, you know, while the county is going through its budget cycle, if there's opportunities for us to advocate at that point, to be writing letters at that point, to be testifying, you know, I, I just feel like maybe we can, if we can insert ourselves in the process earlier, not that that's, that we can necessarily solve the problem, but at least that if we're vocal and we're there, they could take notice. I don't know if that's possible.
No, I think you're right. I think now's the time when the county is having hearings on the budget, and now's the time to, to speak up loudly. So President Gelati, welcome. It's so nice to have you here. So just, and this, this, this information is disturbing, but on the brighter side, with the, the company, the fundraisers and whatnot, big plans, good things happening, I was thinking to myself, with the crab feast every year, if there's some way that we can delay former councilman Ed Putins from getting there, perhaps it'd be more profitable without him eating so many of the crabs. Maybe, we'll work on that.
Two hours later.
I'm sure we'll have enough crabs this year, get a different vendor.
Any comments or anything we need to hear from, from your perspective? Because I know we, we got a question out here from the public, so the floor is yours.
Well, what we're trying to do here is we're trying to get more active in, in what's going on with the city. We're doing more outreach programs and not just, we're trying to get involved with the police department. We've contacted them, for instance, with the, our big major accomplishment was every year that the Ladies Auxiliary puts on the Easter egg hunt, it was down at the firehouse, so we collaborated with the American Legion, and we had the Greenbelt Police up there as well, and it went over, went over pretty good. So wearing both hats, I'm trying to get the American Legion and the Greenbelt Fire Department involved in more community activities, because we're such a close-knit organization. As you can see right here, we've had some accomplishments through the year going in that direction.
Very good, very good. Mayor Pro Tem?
Well, I was just going to note, because it's not actually the, just the Ladies Auxiliary anymore, it is, it is a coed auxiliary now, is from, from what I understand.
That's right. I stand corrected.
There's a few, a few husbands of firefighters that are now members of that, so I think that's, I think that's a good development.
Just one more thing before we go to questions for the public. Small renovations to the station, so is the county, you know, there was some things with the roof, and I think the parking lot got replaced or fixed or something, are we waiting for any other repairs from the county?
Right now, we have one HVAC system that's down, and, you know...
Yeah, and today it was 92 degrees or something?
Well, I mean, not just to, you know, benefit, because it's, you know, come the summertime, but that HVAC system operates, you know, around the clock, because our heating system is old-school boiler heat, and there's no thermostat on it, so it constantly runs. So that's one thing we have in process with the CIP project, to update our HVAC system to, you know, go to modernize and do away with that, so, you know, it's more efficient. Major renovations, we're actually meeting tomorrow, discuss the trustees, projects and concerns around the station, on how we can fund them and source like that. Major projects, we just completed parking lot renovation from the city, and then from, city also received from 508 funds, I forget how much they received, but we utilized that money to point up the outside of the mortar for the building, and re-renovate the men's bathroom. So there's some, a lot of little upkeep that needs to, you know, happen, but we're plugging along.
Yeah, and, you know, the, the building, there's a number of community groups that are over there, I think the, the dog, what's it, the?
Dog training alley.
What's the name of the precision dog?
Not the precision dog.
They're in the prey, and they're very precise.
They are very, they're very good.
And...
We also have the, I think the police department does their examination process and uses that building there, so it gets quite used.
Yeah, and I think the Golden Age Club in the past, until COVID, was having the, the tax preparing stuff going on down there. We're hoping to get that, I was talking to, talking to a couple of people, we're hoping we can get that going again, back going again, maybe next year. So it's, it's, you know, an important facility in the city of Greenbelt, so we really appreciate all that you guys do, all of the time that the volunteers put in, and Chief Tommy, the staff, keeping us all safe. There's a question, any questions from council? Yeah, yeah. Council member?
It was wonderful to see at your annual award ceremony that you had some younger volunteers that were represented. I was wondering if you could talk a little bit about your recruitment efforts, especially for young adults coming in and coming up? What are you doing to sort of bring them into the family?
So recruitment retention is challenging nowadays, as you can see, younger youth wants to spend their time, video games and stuff like that. So hopefully, touch base with the chief, and maybe work with the community center and record department, maybe in doing like a camp. I know where I used to work, and they did a police camp, and it was pretty interesting. And hopefully, you know, if we do something jointly with the police department, fire department, we can, you know, kind of attract that younger youth and maybe steer them in the right direction. So that's in the future, for, you know, maybe something for next year, to start planning and start planning now, so. But recruitment and retention in a whole, we just had Eleanor Roosevelt Public or Career Day, we had a booth up there, we had a couple people show interest, so we're going to meet and greet with them, with their parents, to see, you know, if they're truly motivated and coming on board. And we have stuff throughout the state and, you know, county level as well, recruitment retention, so, you know, we, we get them in, we get the applications in, but, you know, trying to get them through the whole process is pretty daunting, especially when sometimes it takes, you know, a month or two to try to get them through the initial application process, and that's on the county level. And the reason why it takes so long, there's short personnel for doing background investigations, so, you know, so I know they're working on that, to try to come up with a plan to, you know, have that timeframe turned around.
Appreciate that. So, yeah, there's a career day coming up at the middle school. I don't know if you're aware of that, if anybody is available, you know, I think being out at the different career days, high school, middle school is a good, good way to...
Elementary school. But I already put my dips in.
Excellent, excellent. So are there any questions from the public? Yes, or, please.
Jay Davis, Greenbelt East. First of all, I want to thank you, because I actually utilized the ambulance service last year, and I don't know which of the ambulances it was, but it was a pretty rocky ride. It was not comfortable, but I was glad that I was being taken somewhere where I could be helped. And the personnel were, were very good. They got me down the stairs from the third floor on this contraption, which, because I couldn't walk, so it was quite interesting. I'm sorry to hear that the county is, is not funding you at the level that you deserve, and I'm glad that the council is going to have a work session or a letter and meet. I think this should probably be brought to our county council person's attention as well, especially during the hearing, budget hearing time. You, you mentioned that you, you need HVAC, and is that the county that has to work with the HVAC?
Yes, the county is responsible for that, but, you know, some items that we take on ourselves, because the timely and getting stuff done is very time-consuming, so, but the county's responsible for that, yes.
You mentioned last year about ceiling tiles, was, were they replaced?
Yeah, we replaced the sealant tiles in the lounge area and also in the bunk room as well, and the county took care of that project.
Okay, and I think you also applied for some ARPA money? Is that what you... Okay. And I think you also applied for some ARPA money. Is that what you?
No ARPA money. We did put in three projects for CIP. Two of those were accepted in the CIP project, but we don't know where we fall in line. And it might be, you know, put on for next year's budget. So we haven't had no answer yet from the county on that.
And I think your idea about having a, a public fire camp to get encouraged with kids. Kids, every kid wants to be a fire person, you know. And so if you can kind of get them interested in, in a camp, I think that would be great. Good idea. Thank you.
Well, thank you so much.
More question. Is this, and I don't know, if you would rather send this in an email later or talk to me in person, is this an ongoing issue that you're having with the county or is this recent? I just feel like this is a lot of friction with the county just to be having all of a sudden, if you're not hearing about when your projects are going to be funded and you're not hearing back about different issues.
It's, it's ongoing. Yeah, it's been, been years.
Didn't know. Cool. Now I know. Thanks.
Hey, well, thank you for your service. Thank you for everything you do. What's the next event you got coming up?
Probably October.
Crab feast. Crab feast?
Yeah.
Okay. Those tickets go pretty fast.
We'll make sure you get one.
Works for me.
Mine up too, while he's there.
Don't raise the price for my ticket. Don't make me pay extra. I'm not like Councilman Putins.
Thank you for your time and, you know, hopefully it won't be a long evening for y'all.
So much.
Yeah, it's so cool. So, yeah. So next up, I'd like to bring Laura Kressler, are you, are you, which, can you come up to the table? So we got a budget request related to public safety from the CERT team, Greenbelt Emergency Response Team, Volunteer Response Team, residents, and also secret for the, the Animal Response Team. And Laura Kressler has, has been the chair of that committee for a few years now. You've been working as a CERT volunteer for how many years?
I think I've been on, I think I've been on CERT maybe for close to 10 years.
10 years.
And the CART team, we actually got that going in 2018. I think, no, 2016, I think it was, when we first got, kind of got it rolling. So it's been more like eight.
So CERT, Community Emergency Response Team is a, it's an entity, it's an organization. Volunteers get some specialized training and actually help support the police department or the fire department in various aspects when there's an emergency. And for example, during COVID, you had the, the CERT team was helping out with a little crowd control there at the farmer's market. And each year at the Fourth of July Festival, CERT team has a tent there and helping, providing water and just kind of keeping an eye on things in general. Yeah. Festival too, yeah.
Yeah.
Yep. So really important functions. A lot of things kind of, you know, COVID just threw a wrench into so many things, so. So we got an email this afternoon with a budget request and I, we can't really put it up on the screen, or can we?
No, I think, I think Shania had it up a minute ago.
Okay. So Dr. Kressler, do you want to kind of walk us through it?
Yep. All right. So we've got the CART budget up there first. And, and as you already said, you know, COVID kind of threw a wrench into a lot of things as far as, you know, how much we were doing. The CART team really didn't do a, a lot during COVID. Last year, my hope was that we were going to pick it all back up. And unfortunately, I was out of commission most of last year, as well as part of the beginning of this year. So happy to be back in the saddle again and have already talked to a number of my teammates. And we're going to try to ramp things up here soon.
Do you think we'll be able to host, because it's another, this organization, CERT, it's another partnership, I guess, with, with the county. So it's been a while since there's been a training for new volunteers. I, I went through the training and I've got my preparation pack and my hard hat and my wrench and my flashlight vest. I'm ready, go. But when was the last time they had a training around here? Because Berwyn Heights had an active group and I don't think they, I don't, the Berwyn Heights group sort of dissolved.
You know, it's a little hard to tell what's going on in Berwyn Heights. I heard they dissolved, then I heard they were sort of back. But, and I just heard recently that they decided to downsize their trailer. They were trying to get rid of a lot of stuff. I know we volunteered to take lots of it, but haven't heard anything back.
I thought they were going to actually get rid of the trailer, yeah.
That's what I really wanted and, but, but yeah, the, we haven't had a, a CERT, a basic CERT training here in the city. Definitely, it was before COVID, definitely. And it was a couple of years at least before that. Our plan was that last fall, that was one of the things we wanted to do. So I definitely inked it in for, for this fall at the latest.
So you think we can do one here and host one here in Greenbelt?
Yeah.
And it'll be for anybody in, in the area. It wouldn't just be for Greenbelt.
Right.
And the county would actually kind of put that on.
I mean, obviously, you know, our hope would be that we would draw a lot from Greenbelt, but absolutely people would be, you know, able to take it, you know, from other areas. Besides, our CERT team has people that live in other areas. We don't just have Greenbelt residents. We have people that don't have a CERT team in their city, so they came and joined ours. So, you know, that gives us a lot of help and allows them to participate. So I think that, you know, the plan would be to try to do something in the fall. And that would be a joint, in my mind, I want to do it as a joint venture between both the CART team and the CERT team since CART has to take the same training. So we'll take, you know, and we have a few people that are on both teams, myself, obviously, as well as a few others. So as far as the, the CART budget, our budget has been, as long as I can remember, it's been $1,500 a year. Plan was, last year was to get that money spent on a laptop and some software to help us manage a shelter that we would set up. That's still the plan for the money from this past year, since we haven't run out of time just yet. And as far as what we would like for the upcoming year, it's, we're leaving it the same amount. Not asking for any increases. Our plans are to do a lot of the same things we've done in the past to, except we are adding participating at the Fourth of July. There's a lot of dogs that show up at the Fourth of July and it gets pretty hot. So the thought was, you know, we already do cooling tent and first aid, you know, for folks that are there, but we like to do at least a cooling tent. Doing first aid for dogs gets a little sticky, but, but there's no reason that we can't provide some cooling and hopefully keep them out of trouble that way. So that would be one event. Still want to participate with Labor Day Festival. I'm sure we'll probably put the trailer back in, the parade, since it's nice and pretty and shiny. And, and then, you know, have it down at the festival for people to poke around in and look at. And then, you know, do, we have an event that we will, we have to do each year to, which is kind of part of the contract with the grant that we got to get the trailer and that's just participating with our major donor. And, and that's pretty easy. They usually do their event in Bellesville, so we just drag the trailer up there for a little while and, and then kind of show it off and turn around and come home.
So with, with G Cart, you know, a lot of thought and effort was put into fundraising to, to purchase the trailer. And donations came in from some, not just from the city of Greenbelt, but actually mostly from.
A lot of, a lot of different dog clubs, different AKC groups, as well as some community groups. We had Moat, Methodist, you know, gave us some money. Our major donors from Hyattsville, it's a dog training group from there. And we had, you know, a whole collection. A lot of people get confused when they see the trailer because they see all of the logos all over the trailer. And those are our donors. That's what, that's what those represent basically. And the, the biggest of those logos is Hyattsville's because they're the one that, you know, that made it possible for us to go ahead and get that grant, you know, process approved and then to be able to continue raising money until we hit the mark.
Okay, so will you be doing some fundraising? I know you, you were over at GHI at their this month, I guess.
Yeah, we were asked to come over and kind of show off the trailer and let people know that it existed. And we were more than happy to do that. Kind of help educate the public as much as we can on what CART is and what we potentially can do for the, for the community. But the other, you know, object of that was also to get out there and do a little bit more education on disaster preparedness and try to make sure that, you know, people start thinking about not only themselves, but also their pets. So, you know, we plan to keep doing that, you know, as long as we get invited, we'll show up.
Appreciate it. Questions from council? Ms. Pope?
I'm very familiar and I talk to Laura on a regular basis, so I don't have any questions. But I think it's great. And, and the last event too was, was, was really, and there are a lot of people that came by and stopped in, so that was really cool. And I'm glad that you're back and, and we get things rolling again because I know, you know, it was a tough time for you too. So I'm glad you're here and, and I'm glad you, you're doing all this because it takes a lot of work to do this. This is not easy. I mean, to organize all these two groups, I mean, there, there's a lot of work behind that. That is not easy. Yeah, yeah. But that, I know that keeps her very busy, very busy. So thank you.
Are there cats at the cooling tent at the Fourth of July? I was going to say, I don't know, maybe that's, yeah.
You never know what might show up.
Hey, we're going to take a question from the public before we move on to other parts of the budget.
Have we talked about CERT?
We haven't.
Oh, CERT, oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
We have to do CERT.
CERT.
Next.
Yeah, go ahead.
We need the, the next memo up. Should I switch to that one for us? There you go. So our current budget is the same as with CART. It's $1,500. We have not, and this is probably a good thing in this case, we have not yet spent last year's money yet. However, we have discovered that the CERT trailer leaks really bad. And we thought that it was fixed and it isn't. I think it's the age of this trailer. It's, I think it was old when we got it. I don't even have a clue how old this thing is. So I think that we're starting to get some corrosion probably up on the top of it. It's my, best I can figure from being inside of it. Unfortunately, a lot of inside of it is now very wet. And so, you know, we know that we have things in there that are, that are now, you know, heading toward the dumpster. We need to, we're in the process of trying to get a group of folks together to go over there and pull the whole thing apart so we can figure out how much stuff is going in the dumpster. I'm hoping not too much, or at least nothing that's particularly expensive is my hope. So, you know, we will have to see. But basically, the memo basically details the fact that what we really need desperately, and we already needed this from a size and space issue, but now we need it because we have a whole new problem. And that is, you know, we really need a new trailer for the CERT team. We need one that's about the same size as the CART trailer, which is somewhere in the ballpark of like 16 feet long, about seven feet wide, I believe. Knowing, you know, cost wise, what that CART trailer cost. And I will have to first say that the, the price tag that was on that CART trailer is much higher than what it would cost to get an empty trailer because that came loaded. So it's $22,000 price tag is not what we're looking at. I think we're probably looking much closer to like 10. Now there are, we've gotten a few different prices. There's actually a couple of slides that my co-leader made up for us. And basically, they kind, she kind of got us a few prices on some empty trailers that were different sizes. And, and that, I saw it go flying by. There it is.
You know, this, the CERT team, it really is regional impact. And, you know, our, our team is active. So, you know, it's, we should be getting some county money for that. But, you know, certainly the CART team, the CERT team is something related to emergency response. So maybe if we are in a position with our American Rescue Plan funding, because we did actually use CERT volunteers during COVID, maybe that's something we can carve out. Some, I don't know if we'll be able to do the full 10, but maybe that's something we can carve out a little bit of money. Sure.
Yeah, and the, you know, the, our original intention was, you know, to ask for our standard, you know, budget. Obviously, that money can be put toward a trailer. Like I said, for this current year, I don't know how much of that needs to be spent to replace things that are, you know, floated around the trailer for too long. These are just basic prices. Some of these are, I think, a few of these are older prices. I think the one in the upper left is probably closer to what we're looking at at least. If you go to the next slide, Shania, she actually got, got some estimates for us on different options that we can put into those trailers. The CART trailer, for example, has fluorescent lighting inside of it, so it can be turned into an office. It actually has, you know, electrical outlets. And it does have some shelving and different things up in the front of it. Obviously, all of that stuff is not needed. I think basically what we need is a, is a bigger trailer that doesn't leak. That's my, that's my first and foremost. It would certainly be nice to at least have some lighting in there because it does make it a little hard when you're in there digging around looking for something if you, if it's, you know, if you don't have some good lighting.
Councilmember McKenna, it's your question.
Yeah, this might be a, a long term. It doesn't necessarily solve your immediate issue with the leaking. But I was wondering, do you receive funding from other agencies like FEMA or anything like that?
As far as we're aware, that's not, we haven't been able to find anything that's available because, believe us, we, we hunt.
Because I'm just wondering if it was put together with other funding that the city might need. Because I'm just thinking about the session that we went to at National League of Cities where the FEMA representative was there and the money that they said was available for things like this could fit into that. So it wouldn't be a request, wouldn't just be for this, but if there are other needs and issues that this could also be incorporated into that, that might be worth looking into. So.
We have looked around for stuff, but, you know, when it came, we, we found one, that one grant for the, for the CART team and we were ecstatic and it worked out really well. Fortunately, we haven't been able to find anything that's even, anything of any description that would relate to CERT.
There is a lot of federal funding around. We, like I said, there's a possibility that we might be able to carve out a little bit of money somehow, depending on how things go from the, the ARPA resources. It's, it's a lean year though, you know, it's pretty tough. Ms. Pope?
So I'm just wondering, with all the stuff that you have inside the, the trailer, right, and it's leaking, can we cover it in the meantime or do we have to store it somewhere? Because you have a lot of crates and everything in there and I mean, that, those are not cheap.
Yeah, we don't have, the CERT trailer doesn't have those, but the, but there is a lot of stuff in there that is going to potentially get water damaged. Fortunately, it's leaking, I think, in one particular place. So it's been, we've got a bucket under it at the moment, but, you know, unfortunately, every time it rains, then, you know, we have to go empty the bucket. There's having a lot of stuff in there that, you know, can get damaged pretty, pretty quickly. So.
But we'll, we'll put this on the radar. I think it's, it should be part of our general resiliency planning and emergency preparation planning. These are one of the things you can't plan around for, so you just have to be prepared. So we'll work on figuring out a replacement option for that trailer.
It'd also make it, it would also be nice to be able to have a trailer that, you know, we can organize better as well. That trailer doesn't lend itself very well to doing that. So it sort of ends up with, you know, stuff shoved on these very odd shelves that are in there that are very, very narrow, front to back, as well as height wise. And then everything just ends up in a big pile on the floor. And as soon as they move it, everything kind of goes a bunch of different directions and it's sort of like just stirring the pot. And it's really hard to find stuff and get stuff out of there.
Really nice if we can.
If we really need it, you know, it slows us down significantly.
It'd be really nice if we can.
So would you want something with windows access to it too? Like side panel access rather than just a rear door?
The awning thing on there. So that would imply that kind of, it's not windows, but you roll the hand crank.
We definitely want one that is designed the way the current CART trailer is designed, which has a side door near the front on one side, but it also has a drop tailgate. The one we have right now for CERT has two doors that just swing open and it makes it a lot harder to get things that are heavier in and out. With the CART trailer, it's got a really nice hydraulic gate on the back and it just sort of lowers itself once you get it started. Makes it a lot easier to get stuff in and out of there and for people to, to walk in and out. Otherwise, people are having to constantly climb in and out and it's, we end up with, you know, having to watch people when they get tired, they don't end up on their heads. So, or hit their heads on the way in and out.
I mean, there has to be an option too for shelving and stuff inside and clothes, things that you lock up. So every time you move it.
There are some nice strips that can be mounted on the walls there. There's strips of metal basically and they have these things that sort of lock into them that allow you to put essentially straps, heavy duty straps around things that. them that allow you to put essentially straps, heavy-duty straps around things that need to be tied down and you just ratchet it nice and tight. Problem is that we can't really do that the way the current CERT trailer is. Somebody, I guess, attempted to customize it and it just doesn't work. I mean.
Maybe you guys want to have a meeting and then maybe get, go through some examples so to say what's needed so we can maybe figure this out and help out with that because I think this is an important project.
It's a trailer, it's over in the Police Department, Public Works? Okay, okay.
They made it a very nice little concrete pad and both of our trailers sit over there side by side, way around in the back by the back gate.
Cover it up. Councilmember?
Yeah, thank you. I met Ms. Kressler at the GHI Animal Emergency Disaster Preparedness Event.
Yes, yes.
Sorry. I know, Ms. McKenney was there too and she and I talked to Laura for a while. So, I was really excited to learn that we have this capability here in our city to have some kind of disaster emergency response. I think that's incredible. I think that's, you know, it's great for to back up the police and our fire department in that way. So, when she was telling me about the state of the trailer, I was very dismayed because you can't really respond to emergencies if all of your supplies are moldy and wet and it's so. I do hope that, I appreciate Osway being willing to talk about this. I hope we're able to find some kind of solution where we can work with them because I do think we're fortunate to have this right here in our county. And I know you go other places too, but I like that it's right here.
Yeah.
And I hope that we're able to do something to sort of help this, to help you guys get to where you need to be. So, because I think $10,000 is actually not a lot for a trailer that's gonna provide the kind of services that it could provide, which we hope you never need, but, you know, you want them there if you do need them, so.
Let's see, let's pause. It's almost 8:30, so let's pause for some questions from the public, please.
Thank you, Bill Orleans, Greenbelt. I can't know what was distributed to council earlier by the two representatives of the fire department. It was prefaced as it was being distributed, they did not know if council had seen this. Maybe council had not. I had not and still have not. But there was nothing projected other than the budget page from the book, so presumably it is not in Greenbelt's system. But with the presentation from CERT, it is in this. Ms. McKenney, thank you very much. I should not be receiving this from you, I should be receiving it from the city manager and staff, but I thank you very much.
You're welcome very much.
What's being presented by CERT's representative is in the system because there's a memo, which I can't read from back here, or even if I was sitting up here, is in the system because it's projected. Not in the tenure of Mr. Salmaron, who's new. And welcome, Mr. Salmaron. I can't recall if in the tenure of Ms. Gaiman, she's not as new. But it was long ago asked and agreed by council that when any of the departments come to a budget session or any work session with material or any of the voluntary associations that are presenting material to council in a work session, copies of that material should be on the table for the public to have an opportunity to peruse and read and/or read, at least better understand what's being discussed. The fact that what's in this system is Kressler's presentation is not on the table, it's beyond me, I don't know why. I can't know, again, what was distributed by the fire department, it was not in the system. But certainly, before I leave here tonight, I and I think maybe, maybe, hopefully, other members of the public who are not city staff, might like to see these same documents. Thank you very much.
I believe that may be what Ms. Gaiman is doing at the side right now. Sometimes things come in late and there's not time to adequately prepare them, but I believe Ms. Gaiman is doing that right now. And sometimes you just have to be patient, Mr. Orleans.
Thank you, thank you. Dr. Kressler, thank you so much for your good work. It's good to see you here in person. So, looking forward to that, the training, the CERT training in October. Maybe I'll get a refresher on that, give me a chance to get my hard hat out, my little vest.
Technically, you're supposed to get refreshed every two years.
Do. Okay. Hey, so we're gonna go ahead and pivot to the, to the police department, animal control. And this material is all within the proposed budget. Chief Bowers, how are you tonight?
Good, ma'am, how are you?
Good, good. Do you want to bring anybody else up to the?
Yeah, I'll have Deputy Chief White come up and join me.
Deputy Chief White, White?
Animal Control.
Jordan, are we going in?
Can we do Animal Control?
You want to do Animal Control?
Then it doesn't have to need, then it doesn't have to stay here the entire time, right?
Oh, let's, let's do, talk about Animal Control initially.
Absolutely.
So, you know, thank you for all that you do, Chief Bowers. And Walter, are you coming up?
Yep.
Welcome, it's great to have you here. So, Chief, do you want to just queue up this conversation?
Sure, absolutely. So, our Animal Control Services or Animal Services section of our budget pretty much mirrors where we were last year. We have an increase in salary costs as it reflects to pay increases for staff. It is the same number of FTEs. We are allotted three and a half FTEs for Animal Control. We have only funded three of those positions for this fiscal year. We had to reduce funding in order to get underneath budget. So, we have three full-time staff members on board right now and we'll carry those three same staff members into next year. Everything else pretty much runs the same within the Animal Control budget. You will see under item number 50, it says $41,600. That is an error and it should be $1,000 in that line, so that'll be corrected in the next iteration of this document. So, that will be a reduction in this particular section of the budget. Some substantial accomplishments for our Animal Control section, getting to full staff. It's been one of the biggest achievements that we've made. Walter's worked diligently. We were at full staff, dropped back down. Walter just recently brought another person on board that is currently in training. And so, that has been the biggest thing. The other really big achievement for our unit this year under Walter has been the reemergence of the volunteer program. He's gone through a lot of effort every month to host orientations at the shelter, bringing a number of different volunteers. And Walter can correct me, but I believe we're up over 20 volunteers now. Is that correct, Walter?
We're close to 40.
Close to 40 volunteers now. So, that was something that we had, just a handful, less than a half dozen volunteers when Walter became the supervisor to up over 40. So, pretty substantial accomplishment by him. He puts a lot of passion into the facility there and it shows in everything that he does. You know, some other, some other things that he's managed to do in the last year, reintroduce the food pantry program. He's upgraded a number of different pieces of the facility itself and we'll talk in more detail about the facility. Working with local grocery stores and chains to receive donations and improve the appearance of the shelter, both interior and exterior with the aid of Public Works, some painting, some cleaning, for a lot of different things done to the shelter to try to get it in a much more presentable fashion. And recently resumed one day of open hours. So, that's really good. We didn't have any open hours since 2020 because of the pandemic. And then staffing, other issues have limited us. So, with the volunteers and the full staffing complement, we've been able to get one day a week open. And we'll see how this goes and then there'll be an opportunity maybe for a second day, depending upon how this works out.
Why don't you keep going?
Okay. Some of the other things that we're working on in terms of our management objectives out there, creating pet programs, adoptions, lost and found, that's been one of the biggest things is to really try to find ways to return animals when they're lost. And Walter's a big advocate of chipping your, of your pets so that if it does become lost, we're able to get it returned to you. And that's a successful program. When we do get animals in, and again, Walter can correct me, but the chances of us returning an animal that's not chipped is like less than 10%, Walter? Yep.
What's the cost of doing that?
Walter, what's the cost on a chip?
A chip, a chip costs us about $3. So, we're gonna do a $5 microchip program to cover some of those costs as well as a tiny bit of the staff time that's used. Doesn't get any better.
And the other thing that Walter's done a lot of is working with rescue organizations to try to get animals out of the shelter. We have a pretty substantial amount of time that animals do stay in the facility, so we're trying to reduce the amount of time that they're actually within the facility and get them into foster care or adopted much quicker. Where we run into trouble, obviously, are those animals that are there pending an abuse case, cruelty case, and so those we have to maintain at a much longer timeframe.
Hey, well, thank you, thank you very much. A couple of questions. You mentioned the Public Works, the facility and council, because we have many new council members, we had a tour of the facility not too long ago and we're looking around, it's very well maintained, but obviously, it's time to consider a new trailer or a new building or something. So, is that something you're thinking of in the next year or two?
So, that is something that we are interested in doing. We've worked with Public Works to obtain a quote for what a new facility would cost us. That's about $180,000 for a replacement facility. It would fit on top of the existing footprint. We potentially have identified a source of funding that may, it's budgeted for a different task, but we may be able to reallocate those funds into covering this facility. It wouldn't cover all of it, we'd still have to find some additional funding, but we think that would be a good first step.
Ms. Pope?
Yeah, oh, go ahead.
I'm gonna provide additional context to what the chief said about the alternative funding source for the trailers. We were reviewing the work that would be in tail for installing a new water line at the dog park and that $120,000. And given that the trailers are in such bad shape, we need to replace them, we thought that a similar use of those funds would be to dedicate the $120,000 to replace the animal shelter. It would be an immediate and tangible impact and benefit to the animal community, particularly given that the permitting and all the work that would be involved for the water line for the dog park will be a lot more challenging. This, the shifting of that $120,000 to the animal shelter would help move the project of the animal shelter to fruition much sooner. And it still accomplishes perhaps the same, if not greater, impact on the animal community. Now, we would, we would put in the diligent work of identifying the additional $60,000 that will be needed. So, that's a suggestion that should council want to consider, the $120,000 from the water, water project at the dog park to this project.
Immediate impact, short-term, so we'd be able to do that this year. Yeah, Ms. Pope?
A few questions. So, I can see your point, yes, and I totally agree. My question is, so for a new, one of those new shelter, for a new shelter, you said about $180,000, would that be exact same size or would it be slightly larger? Because I'm just worried if we're doing the same size and I think we're already running, you know, we're already fighting for space, right?
Would be similar size but reconfigured on the interior so that it's a little bit more productive and then also have a restroom facility within the new shelter.
Yeah, I just want to make sure it's large enough and not that we're just, yeah, and the restroom facility, of course, that's one of the, that's one of the issues we have right now. There's no restroom, so that's a must-have. I was gonna say that too, yes, definitely. But, but, you know, I'm just saying, for $180,000, I mean, I understand. I mean, I would just be grateful for a new shelter because the shelter is old. If we can make it a little larger, maybe, but I'll leave that up. You know, if it's, if it's possible, we can do it and if not, then, okay, well, I'll do that. I agree with the water fountain. I do want to just reiterate that we do need to find a way to get water to the dog park, especially when it's so hot, people are out there with the dogs. We need to find a water source for that dog park. We're gonna have to come up with some idea because some people just can't leg around those water bottles into the park for their dogs. That's just not feasible. The other thing is, I like your web postings. And we have three staff members now, right? Okay, so we cut the half position, which wasn't really filled, right?
We have not filled it in about four years.
My question is, so looking at the overtime cost, is that, wouldn't it be better to have a part-time person permanently on staff and then maybe not incur so many overtime costs?
Well, the $13,000 in estimated overtime is far less than what a half-time staff member would cost us. And the reason that number so, is higher than previous fiscal years is because we were short-staffed and Walter was essentially functioning almost as two people and putting in a lot of hours, you know, splitting his shift, his day and a half to come in in the morning and then also again in the afternoon. So, that's why you see that number higher, is because we were shorthanded and that's just Walter filling in all those hours along with Carolina. And so, with full staffing, that number should come down.
And I knew that, I just want to make sure everyone else hears it because that is a question that always comes up. People see it and I'm asked, so I wanted you to explain that yourself. Thank you so much and I do appreciate everything you do, Walter. I think you're doing an amazing, fantastic job. Thank you very much. And I do, on occasion, add to that, right, with this little picture of the fox and everything that came in the other day. So, I appreciate you guys going out and getting the fox. But I can tell that there is somebody else and that, I hope, I hope that it's easier for you, that your burdens are a little bit less and that you can concentrate on, you know, some other things like expanding or getting the new trailer up and going, so that would be really nice.
Getting there day by day.
Thank you so much.
Councilmember?
Thanks. So, I was gonna also question the line to maintain and upgrade, because I know Mr. Kim, when we did our building tour, was like, we have maintained and upgraded everything on this building that we can. We've done every single thing that we can to make it functional and better. And he, he did mention the cost and he said that it would really only be a few days that you would be out of commission, like not even a week or maybe a week.
Because the new facility comes pre-built. They would essentially trailer it in, set it on an existing foundation, bolt it together and it's done. So, it would take, I wouldn't quite say a week, I would say at least two to three weeks because they'll have to remove the old one, repair the foundation and any work that needs to be done on the site before they bring the new facility in. So, I wouldn't quite estimate that quickly, but within, you know, I think 30 days, we would have the site, the old trailer removed, site cleaned and prepared, and the new facility put back down.
Yeah, I mean, I just, I know how important the shelter and the animal control is to this community. We hear from them all the time about how important this is. So, I hope that we can find a way to just make the conditions there a little better, especially the fact that there's no bathroom in there and now that we have three full-time staff. And I know that they could just go into the police department, but it would just be nice for them, you know, to have one accessible. And congratulations to Walter on hiring Dawn, she's awesome. She does the Citizens Police Academy with me and the other council members and she's pretty great and excited and I know she's really enjoying it there. So, I'm happy you have her.
Okay. Hey, I have a couple of questions. Mr. Roberts, please.
Oh, thank you, I appreciate it. Well, I was just, you know, wondering if you're gonna spend $180,000 on a, on the shelter, why would you buy another trailer for 180? I mean, I know it looks appealing, you know, you take one out, put the new one in there a couple of days or whatever, but, you know, we could build a lot nicer building than that for $180,000 that would last a lot longer. I mean, why would you buy another trailer that, okay, you're gonna have to replace it in another 20 years or something? Maybe we need to find a, you know, a better site where we have a little more room and have a better building, a larger building, rather than just another trailer, especially for $180,000. I mean, I know a little about, about building stuff and you can build a pretty good building for 180 grand. So, I think we really should think about that, you know, about making it better rather than just another trailer. And that's a lot of money, I think, for a trailer, so.
Just a thought.
Hey, just looking at the budget itself on page 153, I was wondering on that line 57, the jump from $19,000 in 2022 to, up to $30,000. So, did we transfer some of the canine expenses in the other part of the budget over to Animal Control?
No, if something, like the police canine, that's all remained within our budget. This is our care, feeding and vet bills and everything for all of the animals that we bring into the shelter.
Okay, so it really shouldn't be canine expenses on here then, should it?
It could be renamed.
Okay. And you were mentioning the one, being open one day a week. So, I was just wondering, I keep reading about the county facility and how they've had to close a number of times. I guess there's some kind of flu or something? So, how have we managed to insulate ourselves from those same kinds of challenges here in Greenbelt?
So, one of the things to note about those county closures is that's closures to people bringing animals in to drop them off. It's not necessarily closures to people coming in, but they're trying to keep those canine viruses from coming to, into their facility. So, what they do is they are stopping voluntary drop-offs. So people who want to voluntarily surrender their animal, that's what they're, they're not allowing. It's not that the facility is closed to humans, it's just closed to dropping other things off. And I'll, I'll let Walter talk about all the precautions that he goes through in order to keep the animals safe inside our facility. Walter?
So, bring it a little closer to me. So for us, you know, it's all about pretty heavy cleaning protocols that we follow every day. You know, we do have a small facility, so, you know, ideally we'd have a way to separate animals. But, you know, if we have someone that we believe is sick, we just don't bring them into the shelter right now. They go to the county facility. They have been closed on and off for weeks throughout the last year and they are our backup. So when they don't have availability to help, people come to us next. So that's one thing I'll add is, you know, when they're closed, we feel the extra stress of, of having to deal with that. But, you know, cleaning protocols and just knowing what to look out for when it comes to sick animals and not letting them come into the shelter where they could impact everyone else that's living in there. You know, getting a virus like that through our shelter would be incredibly costly and, and it could potentially be fatal for some of the animals there. So we're pretty serious about that.
Very good, very good. So chief mentioned voluntary drop-offs. So how, what, what is the, you know, during COVID, antecdotally, a lot of people got pets. They had dogs and cats and rabbits and things because people were home a lot more, working from home. So I think I've read that in some locations, the, the number of voluntary drop-offs has risen a bit. Are we seeing that and how, how many volun, how many drop-offs are we doing yet in an average week or month?
So for us, we have to schedule drop-offs. That's the way that we prevent from having to euthanize anyone. So currently we have a waitlist for City of Greenbelt residents who need to surrender. That can vary depending on how busy we are between two weeks to two months. So we can't provide immediate assistance, especially when the county facility does close and there are dozens of people looking for help in the county. We can only help Greenbelt residents, but we have to respond to anyone that calls us looking for help, even if that's saying, hey, we're sorry, we can't help you, which we wish we could help everyone, but we, we can't. We got a bottleneck shelter. We do the best we can with the people and the space that we have.
So with that, that drop-off waiting list and just the number of, of drop-offs, so has that gone up? Has that spiked this year?
Right now we are, so you, you've mentioned the COVID increase. So that, that wave has tapered off where everyone who got animals in COVID, for the most part, has returned them. If they can no longer keep them at this point, we're just at our standard overpopulation. People breeding their animals, people, you know, adopting or buying animals before they're ready. We're just to our normal every day. I got an animal and now I can't handle it, so I'm going to leave it with you guys. We have Greenbelt residents that call. We probably add a person or two a week when it comes to dogs, two to three a week when it comes to cats. But we tell dozens and dozens of people every single day from other parts of the county that we, you know, we can assist them.
It's unfortunate, but it's, it's a reality. So dogs and cats, what else do we have or what else are we getting over there? When, when council visited, you had a rabbit over there.
Aubrey is still there since then. We've also gotten some snakes who have been adopted since then. So, you know, we get, we get, if we can help them, we will, no matter what species they are. Oftentimes it just depends on whether or not we have the capacities to do it.
How, how big are those snakes?
Oh, that's not.
Well, little. His name was Little Noodle.
Okay.
Really cute. And we have these bright orange rings.
Oh, man, I'd love to see him. Hey, and for a while there, we had this joint spay and neuter program with the Four Cities Coalition. It seemed to work out pretty good. I think we had that in place for about three years. So we have a Four Cities Coalition meeting coming up on Thursday. So are you doing a lot of spay and neuters? Do you have funding for that? Or are you partnering with PetSmart and the other local stores to do that?
At the moment, all of the funding that we have for spay and neuter is general fund money that we get to the city. So just for shelter animals. The Four Cities Initiative was, was really good for the city. So I have personally applied for the spay and neuter program for pet owners for 2021 fiscal year. So if that's approved, that'll be an extra $31,500 that we'll have to provide that service once again. But, you know, so far we haven't brought it up to any of the other four cities. It's just strictly us trying to apply for Greenbelt residents and Greenbelt pets.
Want us to bring that up or are you still not quite ready?
At the moment, we've already submitted our application for 2025, so it would have to be something that we discuss for 2026.
Very good. Hey, thank you for your work. Are there any questions from council? I see there's a question, Jay Davis?
Many of the questions I was going to ask have been taken care of because you got more staffing. And Walter, I'm sorry, I didn't catch your last name?
Last name is Rivas Flores.
Okay, got it. I have to look over here sometimes to see it. Yeah, but anyway, Mr. Regis Flores? Rivas Flores, okay, well, anyway, we'll catch you later. And I'm very happy to hear that you've got all those volunteers. Do you still have WAGs? There was a group called WAGs.
Yes, we still work with WAGs.
Great, because I know that they do a lot of fundraising and so on.
We're, we're working to, yeah, continue the fundraising with WAGs, yes.
Okay, because I know they were working for the windows and things like that as well. And getting a new facility is great. The questions I want, I know that we have three feral cat populations. So do we still have those and, and we're still monitoring those?
At the moment, that is, you know, that kind of goes back to the whole funding and being able to have those resources to manage those colonies with the staffing that we have and have had for the last year plus. We go by and check on them, but we're no longer doing TNR work because we don't have the funding to maintain the TNR program. That is something that, you know, we can also apply for money through the state, but it would require the people to do it as well. So at the moment, we check in on our colonies, but we're not actively working on the TNR program.
Okay, that's a shame because the populations will only grow if you can't do the trap. What are they called, trap neutral something, release, yeah.
That's correct. So funding for that would be excellent and we would love to continue the TNR program if we can get the resources to make it happen.
Have full staff now too, so you can't do it with one, you know, one man people.
I did give some of that information to the city manager of the program that we've had in the past because it was very successful and we were able to keep the numbers down. The other question, I noticed on page 154 that you had no complaints from the dog park about the dogs. I'm surprised at that.
Certainly had at least one complaint.
Because in the past, we've had a few.
Yeah.
The complaints that we received at the dog park are ones that would be considered civil. It would be between two dog owners and nothing that animal control can really get involved in unless there was a person bitten. The complaints that have come to us, we've just had to tell folks if you're looking to get monetary compensation from the person, you know, whose dog attacked yours, that's not something that we could assist with at animal control.
And you do have cruelty cases. I know you do follow up on that.
We follow up on cruelty and neglect cases, yes.
And you said that you're partnering with a local grocery store. Is that the co-op?
No, the grocery store that we're partnering with is actually Moms in College Park. They actually reached out to us, offering donations as well as pet supplies. Plus in Beltsville, who currently donates about 2,000 pounds worth of food to us every month, which is, which is what we use for the food pantry, pantry program. Unfortunately, the shelter animals can't have various diets. We have to maintain them on the same kind of diet. So that food helps us with other programs that can help the city residents.
Okay, because I know that there's a bin at the co-op. I'm just wondering where that food is going.
I believe that bin has been gone for months now, unless it came back. We don't get those donations. I don't know who takes them, but that bin has not been operating.
It doesn't say, it doesn't say for the Greenbelt Animal Shelter. It just says donate food, so.
Yeah, yeah, I, I'd have to go back to make sure that sign is still there. I don't remember it being there.
And I have seen the, the promos for animals on Facebook and in the news review and I, and they're very clever. And hopefully that's helping. And I know that your foster program is also very good with some of our animals that, that need a little extra attention. So you're doing a fantastic job and I'm glad that you're almost fully staffed.
Thank you, Jay Davis, I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rivas, you're doing a great job. Thank you. Any other questions from council comments? Let's go ahead.
I just want to ask how my favorite dog Apollo is doing? Is he still there?
Apollo's still there, you know, even with all of the media stuff we've done to try to get his name out there, the events that we've put on to try to get him seen. We've actually had zero interest in Mr. Apollo. So if anyone's hearing, check out Apollo on petfinder.com. I ask myself that every single day. I think there's nothing wrong with him.
Active dog, right?
Sweet dog.
Not very active, very calm.
He's, he's kind of big-ish, I guess, if, if he, but he's still gentle.
We'll find him a home one day.
Just one more question. Hey, good evening.
Hi, Robert Goldberg Strassler, Greenbelt North. I just want to direct my statement to Walter. Based on what I've heard, I'd like to discuss with you, have a conversation with you to explore expanding Greenbelt porch to supplement your, your pantry through our actions of collecting from the citizens of Greenbelt.
It's a nice idea.
Yeah, thank you. Please reach out to us, I'd be happy to talk about that some more. Okay, thanks, sir.
Okay, Ms. Pope?
So just one question. If someone wants to give a donation to the animal shelter, who did they write the check to?
City of Greenbelt. And we also have an Amazon list on our website.
Have an Amazon wishlist. Checks we actually ask to go to WAGs because they're actually our nonprofit who accepts donations for us. I don't believe that I'm personally allowed to ask for donations as City Animal Shelter.
Right. City of Greenbelt in the memo line, like animal shelter? Okay, okay.
Animal controlled animal shelter, it related to animal.
Thank you so much. Thank you for, for what you're doing. It's great, appreciate you. Okay, well, let's move on to the police general budget. There's a memo, we can kind of, we can actually kind of work through this page by page quickly if you like.
Whichever your desire is, Mayor.
Okay, well, yeah, I, I think just kind of looking at the organizational chart, if we can bring that up. And that's on page 147, staffing. I was just going to comment, Deputy Chief White, it's been a year. This is something that happened in the last year and you were promoted from being a captain. So it's probably a great relief. You were probably getting those late night calls about Captain White's seafood and you need a bushel of crabs. I'm sorry. He hasn't been.
He still gets woken up plenty of times.
But in terms of staffing, you know, things are pretty flat. You've, you've, since 2022, there's really not much of an increase in personnel. So do you want to talk about staffing and the organizational chart?
Yeah, absolutely, we can start with staffing. So one of the things that we implemented in the last year is a restructuring of the department's command staff. We were sort of a flat line before in terms of a chief and then three, three captains that ran each division. We had a retirement at the end of last year, last calendar year. Captain Mark Sagan retired after 33 years with the city. And in, in his retirement, left us with an opportunity to try to make more pyramid shape out of the department's command staff. And so we promoted Deputy Chief White last spring. And so like you said, it's been just about a year for him. And we have Captain Jermaine Gollidge running our operations division. And then we have a captain's position that will oversee the administrative services and investigation sections. And then a lieutenant in charge of each one of those. And the, the idea is that you want to, you want a structure that lends itself to upward mobility. So as you get promoted up, you get to learn a new role before you're entrusted with even more responsibility. And so this allows us to bring people into the command staff at the rank of lieutenant, allow them to work through multiple divisions before being prepared to take a promotional process to compete for the rank of captain. Previously, there wasn't really a competition for the rank of captain because we had a singular lieutenant. So if there was a captain's vacancy, it's pretty easy. So this will allow us to have a more competitive process for the rank of captain. And as we continue to promote the best people into those positions. And so that, that was a big part of the thinking. Also allows us a little bit more direct supervision over these individual units with a command level. Each one of them has a number of responsibilities. So we thought this was a great structure and a good way to go as a small organization. And this was actually something that the city had done a organizational structure study about seven years ago or so. And so kind of adapting from that model that the city paid for a number of years ago. And that, that's where we are now. In terms of our overall staffing, the last 18 months or so, we've been really good about staying close to full staffing. We did have a number of departures in the last 12 months, either through retirement or individuals who left the organization to work elsewhere. But we've also been able to be successful in terms of hiring. So right now we have 51 current employees. We started the year at 53. We had a retirement and then a departure. And so now we sit at 51, but of that 51, eight are in the police academy. So that's sort of the dilemma we find ourselves in on a regular basis that we are, are hiring pretty regularly, but we, we continue to have a lot of retirements and turnover. And so we're hoping that the retirement wave has sort of ended with the last retirement that happened. We still have people who are eligible to leave, a handful. And if they chose to leave, then we'd sort of be right back in the same boat. But we're hopeful that we'll, we'll be a little bit more stable this year in terms of a number of staffing. And we're with these individuals that are in the academy now, potentially all graduate and they're in three separate academies. So the last academy will graduate, we believe in, I think, November? November, so around Thanksgiving, we'll be at a full complement. We're in the hiring process right now for the last two vacancies and hope to have those filled in the next few weeks. So we'll, we'll be back to full complement again. And that's one of the things that in our estimated expenditures for this current fiscal year, you look at our budget, you know, we are, we are spending at a much higher rate. We're within budget, but a higher rate because we've managed to maintain staffing. You know, when I came here, it's, this is my fifth budget cycle with the city, my, end of my sixth full year. We had a shortage of staff. We were at 45 when I was hired and we struggled to get out of the 40 range until the last, like I said, about two years. And we've really made great strides. And, and part of that, I think, was the recruitment and retention bonus program that we created, particularly the referral bonus, the internal referral bonus that has been remarkably successful. So would, and it serves a couple of functions, you know, when, when you're recruiting your friends to come work with you, it's a place then you want to be and you'll continue work with people you're comfortable with and you'll remain with the organization. So that's been the goal and the hope and we'll, we'll see that continue to play out. So our recruiting effort led by Deputy Chief has really paid dividends. The other thing that I'll, I'll note about our recruiting effort, which is, is something that I know we, we as a city have strived for. When I, when I took over the organization in 2018, our organizational complement, we had 31 white officers, 11 black officers and five Hispanics. Today we have 21 white officers, 20 black officers and nine Hispanic officers. So a complete shift in demographics within the organization. And that shift translates across all levels of the organization at entry level, mid-level and at the supervisory and command staff rank. So really something that we're proud that we've achieved, a lot of diversity through the organization in the last five years. And that hasn't been by accident. It's been a, an intentional strategy by, by previously Captain White, when he ran the administrative services section. So something that we really focused heavily on doing over the last five years. And it's really kind of diversified the organization and you, you see the officers, you come from the swearing ends. You know, you see everyone there, you're at the academies and the staff. We really have a great group of people. One of the things that I, is kind of something that I live by, I'll never be successful on my own. It takes a really good team to make the organization function. And that starts with the deputy chief and all the way through the organization. We have a lot of really great people. Now, this last week demonstrated that, you know, the, our core of detectives, the five of them have barely been home in the last 10 days and, and that their effort paid off, right? So it's something we're super proud of, the work that goes in and the dedication that everybody has to the organization and the city.
Yeah, and once again, really want to ask you to share our sincere appreciation to, to all of the folks that actually worked on the apprehension and getting those suspects. Because, you know, it was a team effort as we were talking about this afternoon. But that team, in my opinion, was truly led by the Greenbelt Police Department.
Absolutely, I agree 100%.
County and the federal government and ATF and the sheriff's office and the state's attorney. You know, it's, it's a team, but, you know, it's, I'm, I'm proud of the way we have managed to, to get closer to a conclusion. And I would like to, pivoting a little bit, would like to talk a little bit about the retention. And I would like to, pivoting a little bit, would like to talk a little bit about the retention piece a little bit more. I was thinking that we could talk about that in greater detail a little bit later in the conversation. But just, you know, on the organizational chart, I did have a question about the accreditation manager. I know the, uh, the, uh, Kalia accreditation is something that, uh, uh, separates us. We, we sort of, the Greenbelt Police Department, by having that accreditation is very meaningful in terms of, uh, the standards that we uphold and just doing a self-check, uh, with that. So I believe, uh, the accreditation manager that we had has, has moved on, so.
Uh, no, Mr. Parker remains with the city. Um, he's been with us as the accreditation manager for about eight or nine years at this point. Um, and we're in year one of our current accreditation cycle. So as you know, we, we just were re-accredited last year. Um, and so we are in year one of that current, of our new four-year cycle. Uh, so he's still with the organization and continues to perform, come in every day.
My mistake on that. Yeah, but we would like to, to celebrate that accreditation. We didn't really do anything formally, and it, it's very meaningful, I think. So.
It is, you know, it's not something that obviously started when I got here. That's, that's, this is our sixth accreditation cycle. So, you know, kind of do six times four. So we've been an accredited agency for twenty-four years, uh, and that's saying a lot about the history of the organization and, and those that came before the deputy chief and I, and then those that come after us will, will continue that same tradition.
Excellent. Ms. Pope? Ms. Weaver?
Yeah, and I think, um, one thing just while we're talking about, about staffing there, because you were explaining to me earlier that one of the reasons we had so retire, so many retirements was twenty-five to thirty years ago doubling the size of the department. So a lot of people got hired at once. So then a lot of people are ready to retire at the same time. So that's, uh, so it sounded like we kind of had a bubble of retirements over the last few years.
We, we most certainly did have a, a large group, uh, from my understanding, um, from Mr. Parker, who's been with the city about forty years. Um, is somewhere in the early nineties, the, the department's size doubled, uh, and then all at one time hired a number of police officers who all transitioned through their career together and then transitioned out the door together, uh, which did leave a sizable gap within the organization. But, you know, we have since, um, sort of ridden our way through that, that bubble and, and hopefully got out the other side.
And the other question that came up was related to some of the historic hiring numbers, because there was, there's a question, I see Ms. Lester here in the room, but question about, we had previously been allocated fifty-six sworn officers and now we're at fifty-three, even though the population has grown up. But as you were explaining to me earlier today, some of those positions shifted.
That's correct. So the, the organization, um, had fifty-six police officers in two thousand and eight. Um, and over the time, uh, the previous chief and council transitioned the PIO position and our accreditation manager position to civilian staff. Uh, so they were sworn police officers and they were transitioned to accreditation, uh, to, to civilians, excuse me. And the other one was, uh, Franklin, not Franklin Park, Beltway Plaza Partnership Officer Program. Uh, Beltway Plaza withdrew from that partnership and withdrew its funding. Uh, they, just like the deal we have with Franklin Park where they cover a portion of a police officer's salary. We had the same agreement with Beltway Plaza, but they withdrew. And I believe that's what accounted for the, the third position that is no longer with the organization.
So it wasn't actually a reduction in patrol, well, I, I guess that one Franklin Park position, but that was because it was externally funded. But the other two positions, we are not, we are not, we don't have fewer patrol positions than we did in two thousand and eight. It's just some of the, some of those, those positions that are are now civilian support.
Yes, that's correct.
Yeah, and you know, we, we take our cue, not our direction, but we, you know, we listen to the chief and we listen to the police department, we listen to the city manager. So, uh, if you are telling us that you need to increase, uh, FTE sworn police officers by two or three, we listen, but you, you're not asking us to do that this year. Uh, Ms. Pope?
Yes, that's where my question, oh, my comment comes in. So we know that we have possibly more, um, more, um, housing coming to, to us, the Beltway Plaza project, maybe the fifty-five-plus project, that's, that's hopefully coming as well. And, uh, the FBI possibly down the road. But what are we doing? How are you gonna look at, you know, how do we? We, we need to increase our public service staff, of course, if we have more, more residents, I, I'm assuming. So how are we gonna work towards that?
You know, it's one of those things that, uh, like I said last year, um, because of the same questions sort of keep coming up every year about staffing and do we need more people? You know, and I think it's contingent on a variety of factors, and one of which is as those new facilities continue to be built and population increases, you know, we'll have to examine what we're capable of bringing on board. Uh, where do we need that staffing and how much more do we need? But I think one of the things that we should continue to do is monitor where we are, uh, and then just make a decision once some of that housing starts to actually develop. One of the things that, that I am aware of and, and, you know, we have, we have, you know, limited pool to draw from. And so kind of keeping that in, in the back of my mind in terms of where does more FTEs take us, what does our budget look like? Um, one of the biggest things that, that is not in this current fiscal year's hurdle, um, but will most certainly be in next fiscal year, uh, is the collective bargaining agreement with the FOP. Um, the, this is the last year of that agreement. Uh, just preliminarily looking at what other municipalities have renegotiated. Um, just to give you kind of a, an, an idea, our entry level salary, which we start at a step two, is fifty-eight thousand. Uh, almost every competing organization, and I'm not even talking about the county, started between sixty-two and sixty-four. So we are, we are behind when it comes to those salary numbers, and that's going to be something we have to take a hard look at, which is going to have an impact in our next fiscal year. So just being mindful of, of where those dollars get spent um, is, is just something I try to keep in the back of my mind before I come ask for additional staff.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Council member.
Um, question. So, you know, we have fifty-three sworn officers. We have approximately twenty-five thousand residents. So is there like a formula that you use, like, that police in general use where it's like population density is this, which means we need X officers? You know what I mean? Is there some kind of math and you, that, that it's like X number of people needs X number of, like, X number of people in this many miles, we need this many officers? You know what I mean?
There is a staffing formula, but the thing you have to keep in mind is it's not, it, it's not, you know, uh, for every thousand people, you need one police officer. It can vary depending upon, um, the volume of calls for service that you have, what you're looking for in terms of staffing, you know, uh, so in DC has one of the highest ratios. Um, you get down to a rural county, you'll have a low ratio, right? So it just really depends on, on your, like you said, your population density. Uh, there are, are staffing formulas, but, you know, they're, they're guides, you know, they're not anything set in stone. Um, I think the biggest thing for us is, is monitoring the volume of calls for service, which has increased. You know, we're up twelve percent from last year, which was up from the previous year. So the biggest thing is, is that volume of calls for service driving what we do every day. Uh, and that's, that's the part that's taxing on the patrol officers that are out there.
Yeah. Okay, so that, that makes sense, because I was thinking that you, fifty-three comes from somewhere, right? Like, it's, you didn't just, you know, come up with that from, from nothing. I had asked, um, the city manager in Bertha if they could just project out what it would cost for us to add to. I don't know if you have those numbers, but just if we wanted to consider adding officers, what, what those numbers would look like if we wanted to add two officers? Um, just as we're thinking about the city growing, gradually growing ourselves, as we see our call count growing, and, and not that to say that we're doing that, I just would like to know, and I'm sure all the, the rest of council would like to know, what would that, what would that cost?
At a current rate that the chief just mentioned, or starting rate, we're looking at ninety-five thousand seven hundred and sixteen dollars a
Two or for one?
Per one.
For one, because that includes benefits.
Right.
That doesn't include, uh, the cost of a car or, uh, uniforms or body cam. With the technology, that, that would be another be sixty thousand dollars.
That does not include the vehicles, that includes the uniforms and the vehicle maintenance and other expenses that are associated for supporting a police officer. When you look at the ninety-five thousand seven hundred and sixteen dollars.
That's just the person.
That's just the, the person. And this is, this is for a candidate, so not, uh, a higher ranking officer. This is a starting position.
Probably talking another forty thousand in year one. That's just year one cost for uniforms, academy, um, radio, body cam, all the, the accoutrements to go with it. So you're really looking at about a hundred and forty, a hundred and thirty-five to a hundred and forty thousand dollar year one cost, uh, for each person.
Thank you.
It's helpful to have those numbers.
Hey, and so that, that ratio of, uh, per capita, uh, number of sworn officers, how, how do we stack up when you look at, uh, surrounding municipalities like Bowie, Laurel?
Um, we're very similar to all of them, uh, in terms of staffing and population, I think. Um, Heightsville, I don't know their exact population. It's in about the fifteen to eighteen thousand range, uh, and they have the same number of officers we do. Uh, Laurel's a little bigger population. They have almost eighty officers, I believe. So we kind of fall sort of in the middle of the spectrum.
Bowie's, uh, larger than us. They don't have quite as many officers.
They, they don't quite, but they rely more on the county. Uh, and they're also a, a very much a growing city. Um, they continue to add population. I, I was speaking to their chief the other day, and they have annexed a lot of what used to be farmland around the city, and so they're constantly trying to add additional positions. Uh, I think they've asked for, over the various times, uh, at least over a dozen new positions.
Okay, uh, council member McKenna, do you have a comment?
Uh, I think you probably answered this. I was really building on what some of the other council members said, but it would be helpful to see kind of like a forecast of not just the two positions, if you were gonna add it in the next year, but if our population continues to grow and if we're looking at, you know, twenty, thirty-six is what we heard for FBI, you know, what that looks like if you start to add to that. Um, just to get some planning purposes, and it might be good to do a longer forecast than just an immediate one to two year.
And you know, our, our population really has been pretty flat for a long time, uh, until the past couple of years, really. You know, we were at the same number of people, more or less, for quite some time. So, uh, Mr. Roberts, Representative Tim, I want to get back to kind of working through this information. Would you have a longer discussion? Yes, I know, I know. Mr. Roberts?
Along with the, uh, the fifty-eight thousand, you're saying for a, a starting, uh, a new, new officer? How much, uh, what is the dollar value of the, uh, the benefits that go along with that?
The, the total price tag salary benefits is a ninety-five thousand seven sixty. So roughly ninety-six thousand dollars year one cost, total salary and benefits.
You, can you, uh, give me an idea of some of the benefits that we're providing that cost the extra forty thousand dollars?
The retirement benefit, uh, which is a, one of the larger costs, health insurance, uh, all the various insurances the city provides, life insurance, um, all the different taxes that the city has to pay, FICA, unemployment, there's a variety of, of backend charges that get accumulated in that.
So how does that compare to other departments in, in other cities as far as benefit package?
Uh, our benefits package per police officer is comparable to any other agency. Uh, the largest, the largest benefit cost is the retirement to the stately ops program.
So, so it's a pretty good package when you look at the whole thing, and you're not just getting the fifty-eight thousand. You're getting a, a pretty good benefit package there. And I know for a long time, uh, that was, the benefit package is what really attracted a lot of people, a lot of people to work with the city, not just the department, but in the city in general. And I know the department, you know, when I first started out, we were very proud of the benefit packages that we provided because they were above and beyond what other cities did at the time. So if we're evening out now, maybe that's an issue, but I still think that's for someone just starting out in a career, that's really not a bad deal, you know, to give, when you have thirty or forty thousand dollars worth of benefits added to your salary. So if you stay, you know, for thirty years, you're gonna, you're gonna do pretty well in the end. So, thank you.
Yes, sir. Representative Tim?
Yeah, so this is sort of connected to the, the question of staffing, but moving on to the, the budget summary on page one forty-nine. Because this is the question that I started to ask over email, because we, we have fiscal year twenty-four estimated transactions, one point one million of overtime. Um, and I know it's, I see it's, I mean, that's way more than was budgeted. I mean, that's what, a big over, over, so I guess my question is if knowing that it would be about a hundred and forty thousand dollars for an extra officer, um, and that's what, what is a year, a two thousand, two thousand, um, you know, two thousand forty hours in, in a year? I mean, it seems like, yeah, twenty-eighty, thank you. I knew it was somewhere around there. But so I guess my question is if we're, we're already anticipating this much overtime, it seems like additional officers should help reduce that overtime, and could that be some place to find some room for that?
So part of this number is deceiving.
Okay.
Because as you're aware, we partner with Metro, uh, to provide officers at the metro station, and that's about two hundred and forty thousand dollars a year that we're reimbursed by Metro, but that's all accumulated in this number.
Okay.
So in, in the next fiscal year, we'll actually be showing that in a, in a special revenue line. Uh, Metro is in, uh, I was meeting with them about a month ago. Uh, they'll be continuing it through the next fiscal year. Uh, so that, that detail will continue at the metro station. So it'll actually appear, uh, in next fiscal year's budget in the special revenue line.
Okay. But so that, you said that was two hundred and forty?
About two hundred and forty thousand, yes, ma'am.
Okay, but so that still leaves us as almost a million dollars in overtime.
About nine hundred thousand dollars in overtime, yes.
So, I mean, if we hired another officer for a hundred and forty, does that reduce our overtime? Is that?
It, it's hard to say because some of this is, um, it's communication shortage overtime, it's patrol shortage overtime, it's court, it's late arrests, it's training. Could you offset some of it? Maybe, uh, but I wouldn't, I wouldn't guarantee that. One of the things that we did spend a lot of overtime on, uh, in the last fiscal year particularly was staffing, um, different crime suppression details. Um, and we ran a lot of those last year, uh, given the, the, the crime numbers that we had. Um, we had to overstaff at a, at various points in the year. Uh, last holiday season, we, we overstaff substantially. Uh, we had any given time on the evening shift, two extra officers on, on the road, and that's all covered by overtime. So hiring an extra person might alleviate some of that, yes. Uh, alleviate all of it, no.
Well, yeah, because one person isn't going to be able to do all of that overtime. I, I guess, yeah, but I guess I'm thinking that, that it seems like if we're planning for that much overtime, hiring another person instead of expecting to pay overtime could make some sense.
And, and that's one of the things, some of the overtime will fluctuate, particularly the, the, the shortage overtime as new staff comes on board and they get out of field training, you know, then we'll, we'll have full complements. Uh, all of our patrol staffs are, are at full complement right now, but we don't have staffed out are sort of some of the side units that help cover those deep, those patrol shifts if somebody's in training or calls in sick. Like our community policing unit's reduced to, to just a handful of people right now, so they're too short. So as those folks come back on, two people go back in community policing, that does change the equation on some of the overtime because that unit would pick that up, uh, as part of their regular hours.
So, uh, you know, looking at that, that line, uh, item number twenty-seven overtime, it, it's really the, uh, the estimated versus the adopted budget for twenty twenty-four, and what you're actually projecting for overtime for the next year is, uh, really less than it's been in three or four years.
Mm-hmm.
But I guess, I think to me, the basic point is if you're paying people overtime, there's more work to be done. So if we're paying eight hundred and sixty thousand dollars in overtime, but may, it may, the distribution may make sense. Yeah, I guess, I guess that's, it's, I'm not necessarily solely comparing the adopted and the estimated, but we're planning on overtime, which means we aren't covering all the hours during irregular work.
Right, and, and unfortunately, like I said, the, the estimate, and remember that there's an extra two hundred and forty thousand dollars there, that's Metro. So if you subtract that back out, we're much closer to the actual budgeted amount. Um, but again, you know, it, it's the kind of thing that a lot of times overtime can't be, you can't anticipate when you're gonna have to stay late because of an arrest or all of the court overtime. You know, we try to schedule court on people's regular workdays, but that doesn't always happen. They're on evenings or midnights, that's, that's overtime. You know, a lot of the special details, we have to run the Fourth of July, Labor Day. Those are all overtime staff details. For Labor Day, we'll have seven, eight officers work the entire day. Fourth of July, what's it? Every holiday is accounted for in this number, so holiday overtime is paid on holidays. Um, the, the, like I said, the Fourth of July, pretty much everybody works the Fourth of July. That alone, uh, what do you think the Fourth of July cost us?
Just making overtime that day for twelve plus hours.
So that actually increases the amount of money that
Those, there's a, there's a Yeah, it adds up quick, and there's a lot of those events that we cover. Um, you know, we, we cover a lot of city and some technically non-city events that are permitted events down here uh, at the center that we're paying overtime to cover. So there's a lot of different functions that it goes into. If, if I thought hiring one person could, could, like you said, would reduce some of that, I, I would be in favor of. My worry would be we would, we would withdraw some money from that and then and we still have the overtime, yeah.
That, that person would get overtime too. If we hired five people, they'd all be If we hired five people, they'd all be getting overtime. So it doesn't work.
Sometimes. Hey, just swinging back to page one forty-eight, you were talking about community policing, and you're also talking about some of the strategic patrols where you have two officers assigned to a hotspot area where you know there's going to be a lot of people back and forth. So, but with the community policing on page one forty-eight, there's this nice picture of the bike squad there. So I was just wondering, how often are the bike patrols and the walking patrols? Because I know, you know, we hear from residents, and sometimes they'll say, well, we don't see, we don't see officers on foot very often. We don't see this that much. So how is that looking, just in terms of our current allocation of sworn officers? And are we able to have folks, our officers, out walking on the beat occasionally?
The officers do get out of their cars and walk in or ride bikes. It's not necessarily something that's built into the scheduled part of their day. The patrol officers are taking radio calls at the same time they're fitting in all their activities during the unallocated time. So that would include being out on foot or being out on a bicycle. So they're still expected to handle their calls for service within their beat at the same time. The community policing unit is, does a lot of the bike riding stuff. And so you'll see them more as the weather improves. And that's just something that, as time fits in and when we can get them out on the bikes, they get out.
So just as far as, because they have to be trained for that. So we've got a full contingent of officers or trainees, about eight or nine of them? Ten, very good, very good.
Like their e-bikes?
They do like the e-bikes.
How many, how many e-bikes do we, yeah?
We have two.
Two, okay.
Do you need another one? Two. We might need one or two more. Don't you need anymore? I mean, ask, say something. I think we should look, maybe we can get maybe one or two more, because I think they come in really handy. We have, I mean, just think about Franklin Park alone, going back and it's up and hilly and stuff.
They were fairly...
Very good, yeah?
Yeah, they were kind of a little on the more expensive side, but I know we have two of them.
But maybe we can, maybe we can, you know, if possible, maybe add another one or two. Because I think they really do, are very useful.
Hey, on page one forty-nine, back to that budget thing, just two things I wanted to ask about. So utilities, that's line number thirty-nine. They're all down substantially, so why would that not continue?
I'd have to defer to Ms. Gaiman, because Public Works populates those numbers for us. I could not tell you what we spend on gas and electric at the station. I apologize.
Temperature is kind of down or something, I don't know. Okay.
Was it, didn't get, was it the new roof recently? Maybe the building is better instantly? HVAC? That seems like, that could reduce, that could be part of the, if there's new units there, that could be reducing costs.
HVAC.
It's new roof, new HVAC, so it could have, it could have an impact.
Okay. And also on the rental and maintenance, repair and maintenance, that's down quite a bit.
Talking about line forty-three?
Yeah, line forty-three.
And rental?
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, line forty-three.
Line fifty?
Fifty?
Actually, it had to do with the vehicles. You know, we purchased with the ARPA funds and catching up with deferred spending. We really purchased a lot of vehicles. So I'm just wondering, the maintenance, if the reason why that is down from previous years is because the fleet's actually younger?
It is.
That would be line fifty.
It is much younger than the last two years. We've purchased twenty vehicles. So that's a substantial number. Again, I think this is one of the ones that Public Works populates for us, but I would surmise that the reduction is due to newer cars.
It's a big reduction. Okay. Hey, we're going to pause and take some questions and comments from the public at this time. So, Ms. Lester?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm Molly Lester, Senator of Greenbelt. Want to thank the police force and obviously the fire department, particularly with the challenges over the past few weeks. And I also want to thank staff for their work on the budget and for council for considering. I just wanted to step back to the staffing issue. And I thank you for the explanation, Mayor Protem and Chief on staffing. It appears from the budget book from FY two thousand nine that in two thousand eight, two thousand nine, there was thirty-five master patrol officers. In two thousand seven, it was thirty-three. And there is thirty-three now in the category of police officer candidate through master patrol officer. So the budget also reflects that the additional staffing was in part because of the anticipated development in Greenbelt Station. It also talked in FY two thousand nine about adding an additional four officers once the development took place in the North Core. So since two thousand eight, it sounds like we're basically about the same. It's just, there's been some restructuring of where the officers are. The city population has gone up twenty percent, nineteen, twenty percent. And there's been a twelve percent increase in housing. Greenbelt Station, I haven't done the calculation, but it has added a number of roads. We obviously have seen an increase in traffic. There's been the second wave of the opioid crisis. We're now seeing large events like Strom Hills. We see events, Hanover Parkway. So the police are being asked to do a tremendous amount. I commend them absolutely for the tremendous job that they're doing. I just think that the conversation needs to start now because one of the challenges has been, everybody started the same time retirements and the challenges the police face with finding, you know, candidates. But I really think that the council needs to take a hard look at what's happening in the next few years. I appreciate that staff and everybody's looking at, how do we address the underlying causes? But we still are asking our police force to go out every day in circumstances that have changed significantly since two thousand eight. And we should be devoting more resources. I mean, I appreciate that you guys do what you do, tremendous. And just the fact that there was the arrests just shows the commitment and stuff. But we really owe it to our police force to find some additional resources in the budget. I would also just, stepping back from the police force to how the budget process is done. In two thousand eight, there was a visioning session with the community. So priorities for budgets back then had public input into the process. It wasn't driven by council. It wasn't driven just by management. So in the management letter, it talks about, you know, the public input of various sessions. The last session was in two thousand twelve. Then the visioning session. And at that point in time, the very first goal in the budget was public safety. So it just kind of shows a shift in priorities for the city. Again, there's lots of important priorities for the city. But as somebody mentioned, I guess the mayor had mentioned in an email, without public safety, nothing else matters. We've started spending a lot of money on economic development. So we have to look at impacts that crime have on people's, you know, interest in coming to the city and stuff. All this stuff is tied together, but public safety is definitely a key point. And I just really want to say thank you so much again to the police force for being out there for us every day. Thanks so much.
Well, thank you, thank you. And, you know, I appreciate the comment regarding community visioning. It's something that I've really been strongly pushing for, for a number of years. And hopefully, we're going to be able to actually do that this year.
Yes.
Comment on the, thank you for the feedback. And we've been talking about doing a community visioning process that would then tie into strategic planning. And those things would factor, be factored into our future budgeting process. And we're building the foundation for that work in this budget by introducing the foundational pillars, a strategic framework. Those are the elements that we will build on as a council and staff towards, or it would be, the visioning plan and strategic plan would inform those pillars, the strategic framework, and the strategy. There's something you want to clarify?
Yes, I just would like to draw your attention back to item fifty. I do not want Public Works to take the rap for this. If you look at the numbers, they are the same. I have put them on the wrong line.
See that, yeah.
I apologize. I will make that correction. But Public Works gave me the right numbers. I have them on the wrong lines.
Okay.
Apologies.
But it does not change the total.
It does not.
The total remains the same.
But it did not go down.
Oh, yeah, that's right, that's right.
The point is, those lines did not go down.
Okay, okay. Let's see, we got a couple more comments. I think Mr. Orleans is next.
While we wait for Mr. Orleans, I want to point out that we have printed the material. It's available at the desk and the entrance. So all the handouts that were made available to council are now available at the table.
Thank you for that. They should be on the table. I want to thank again Councilmember McKinnney for offering me one of those sheets of paper. I would suggest that any nice gesture of any individual member of council is inappropriate. Council's appropriate role is to be nice to all residents of the city, not individually to one person at a time, especially when one is making a complaint. But thank you anyway. A few minutes ago, Mayor Protem Weaver indicated something that put me a little off. She had started to ask a question in an email. I don't know whether she finished that email or not and finished the question in that email. But there is a disconnect here. Any member of council should not be making any inquiry of any department head or any Greenbelt employee prior to a work session. Those inquiries should be made in public during the work session. So my request is, assuming that inquiry may have been completed, I would like a copy of that email thread between Ms. Weaver and to whomever it was sent, presumably it was sent to the chief. In the future, however, I don't believe council members should be individually speaking to the, reaching out to employees of the city, department heads or otherwise, about questions that should be resolved in public session.
Just to address that, Mr. Orleans, the purpose was so... Well, I am going to address it anyway because the purpose of sending my questions ahead of time is so that staff has time to look into the answers before we get to the session. So the purpose of the email is, and it was addressed to the city manager, all of council, Bertha Gaiman, as well as Chief Bowers, so that staff knows what my questions that I want to ask, because it is very much more productive for them to be able to look up the answers ahead of time and have the answers ready, which was the discussion I was having with the chief about the questions that I had asked so that he had the numbers ready. That's the purpose.
Okay, thank you.
And I would like to, from the staff side, I would like to read that's something that we have requested because we want to come to these work sessions prepared to answer your questions. We want you to feel that you are informed to make a vote on the budgets that we have proposed.
Ms. Davis?
Jay Davis, Greenbelt East. Mr. Orleans has been attending the budget sessions more. And he knows, he knows that council has sent questions to staff earlier. I don't know why he's bringing it up now, but he knows that we've done this in the past for at least four or five years. And it is placed someplace. The answers are placed somewhere on the city website, which I have yet to find, but I will find them at some point. And it is to save time and to let the department heads know ahead of time what the major issues are. On top of that, a couple of years ago, we did get a breakdown of what each new police officer would require. And it was up to a hundred fifty-six thousand dollars. That includes the vehicle, that includes training, uniforms, benefits, salary, et cetera. I am sure it is much higher now. So you're talking about basically adding another cent to the tax. If you don't go into, you know, different kind of funds, if you add that to the budget, you have to add a cent at least to the tax rate for each officer. I do have some questions, though. I think, and I didn't catch the number, how many of our officers now can use the bikes?
Ten.
Ten? And I believe you've added a K-9?
That's correct. We've added one K-9 that's currently in training.
So that's great. I've asked in the past of how many of our officers can have gotten the Spanish bonus because they knows Spanish well. How many? It was twelve last year.
We'd have to go through. It's not just Spanish as well, it's any foreign language that tests through HR. We can get those numbers for you. I don't have them off the top of my head right now.
And I apologize if some of these questions were answered in the reports. I did not get the reports. You guys got the reports, I didn't get them. But I will at some point. You said that we need a half of animal control. Do we also need a point five parking official?
That halftime parking is not included in this current funding.
Okay, so it's something that we need, but it's not funded. So how many parking people do we have?
We have one full-time parking enforcement officer. But I'm not sure there's actually a need for a halftime position because when the parking enforcement person's not here, the officers handle parking complaints.
Okay. And are we short any dispatchers?
We are currently short two dispatchers.
Okey-dokey. I noticed that on page one forty-nine, line thirty, the professional services have increased quite a bit. Is that because we're doing more with mental health training and professional help?
No, that appears that way because every other year, we have our promotional testing process, and we need to add additional revenue or additional funds to cover that process, which we outsource.
And it does also include the now required mental health screenings for police officers.
Right.
So we have a cycle where we have the officers go through every other year and trying to phase that in. This year was the first year, so there is additional funding in there as well for that, as well as funding for our mental health services for the community through CIT as well.
Okay. And you mentioned that we purchased, because of ARPA and a few other funds, we've gotten twenty new vehicles. And that's why you're not asking for any other new vehicles this year?
Well, we didn't include them in our regular request, but that may be something that comes back in a supplemental alternative funding.
Okay. And let's see if there's something else here. I'm glad that you're going to add to revenue sources the WAMADA reimbursement. And, let's see, there's just a couple more questions because I was looking at the memo. Oh, yeah, you said that we had eleven new police officers, but it did say somewhere else on another page, eight. So you may want to change that. I forget which page it is that it has eight instead of eleven.
I think it's because we have eight in the academy, but we did hire eleven last year, three of which were already certified.
Okay. And you also mentioned in the memo that the crisis team is going to expand its services. In what direction?
So what we've done with our CIT team is we've turned it into a complete co-responder model. So now we have a police officer and our clinician ride together. And so they're able to handle a different volume of calls. And they're also taking on internal mental health, doing wellness training and check-ins on internal staff.
Okay, great. Thank you. I have some other questions, but I'll wait. Thank you.
I would like to provide a little more context on the vehicles. We have applied for public safety fees that are due to us from development projects. We have not collected. This will be a one-time payment. We're waiting on response for that. Should that payment be made to the city, we're looking at that as a potential source for vehicle replacements. And the reasoning behind that is that it's one-time payment for one-time expenses, which would be the police vehicles.
That replacement schedule, is it a hundred thousand miles?
So it varies. It can exceed one hundred thousand miles, but typically it's eight years and then mileage, but also has to do with maintenance on the vehicle itself. If a particular vehicle has got heavy maintenance costs, Public Works will want to replace it sooner.
Okay. I've got a number of questions from the public here to read off that have come in over Zoom. And I guess now is as good a time as any to go through them. The first is from, well, actually, the first three are from Lee Schachter. Number one, "There may be very good reason for more than a few police cars being parked on the street next to the station, but their presence there is bad optics because it implies that they are not needed elsewhere. Would it make sense to park them strategically elsewhere?"
We do use some as decoy cars. The ones that you see are kind of on the side of the station are unassigned or they're spare cars. When somebody's car goes out of service, they need another car to drive. So they'll pick those up. Again, we have eight people in the academy, Again, we have eight people in the academy, so there's eight cars that are waiting for drivers. We do move them around. Logistically, that's not always the best thing because you have to remember where you put it. You have to go get it, keep it clean, keep it moving. But we do use the occasional decoy car, but we wouldn't want to put all of the cars out.
Okay. Next, another question from Mr. Schacter. It has to do with the shootings at Shrum Hills Park. Did Green Belt know that there would be a large gathering of teenagers in Shrum Hills Park? In retrospect, should it have been, and should there have been more of a presence? I know that you can't really talk about things that are currently under investigation, but my understanding is we did not really know ahead of time.
That's correct.
However, when we did become aware of it, we dispatched officers and park rangers to monitor the situation and do crowd control. We could not disperse the participants because there are just far too many. But we reacted quickly. Our officers were on site. And the footage that was released, was released this afternoon, the public will be able to see that officers are on the scene and you hear shots fired while officers are just feet away from where the shots are being fired. So I, I feel that we are lucky that we had officers already on site that prevented this from being a greater tragedy than it was.
Very, very true. Hey, would Councilmember like to read a couple of these other questions?
So this is from Eric King, Green Belt Townhomes off Hanover Parkway. Is there room in the, in the budget to add a speed camera on Hanover near the traffic circles? There are a number of drivers who speed down Hanover and either hit the circle or up in the ditch between the two circles. If not, could public works add speed humps to slow down the drivers before the circles and one between the circles?
So speed cameras are probably a whole separate work session and that we could have at a later time. As currently situated, we don't have plans to put a speed camera there. But we are, as we move into the summer, we'll be doing a comprehensive study on our speed camera program and coming back to you with some options on what to do with the program as it currently stands.
Yeah, I'd just like to remind the chief that council has expressed concern. I've wondered and expressed concern about speeding on Kenilworth Avenue, particularly around Pontiac, which is the right-of-way, I believe is Green Belt's right-of-way. And I've seen racing and I think many of us have seen on weekends racing up and down Kenilworth Avenue. Because that location is in close proximity to a school, although the cameras wouldn't be on side of school hours, I think if we can work with state highway to discuss the possibility of having a speed camera there, that would be a good place.
And that's all part of what we need to do internally and with our vendor, is look at where we can put cameras. There are limitations on speed cameras outside of the school zone program. You can place a speed camera in a residential that's less than 45 miles an hour. So the question is, is, is any of our roadways like Green Belt Road or Kenilworth Avenue considered residential and then is the speed limit less than 45? And then there's state highways. So then we'd have to convince the state highway department to allow us to place a camera out there. So a couple hurdles to clear, but first thing we need to do internally is review the, the program as is and come back to you with some recommendations after we use some site studies and, and take a look at our current program.
Right. And before we go on, so that, that's something, the decision was made to kind of move the speed camera expenses and revenues to a different section of the budget. And what was the reason for that again? Because I kind of prefer to actually see it all in the same place.
Speed camera revenues under Maryland is supposed to be separate funds. You're not supposed to show them commingled with general funds. And so that's why it appears in the special revenue fund. It can still be allocated for public safety, but they're not supposed to be commingled with general funds. That's just the way that the state audit, the auditors and the state law set up to show those funds. So that's why we moved it. And it's all still, it's all still coming into the city. The one thing, though, that's to note about the speed camera, the, the revenues don't match the contract cost. So it is a program that we are subsidizing as a city on our speed camera program, and that doesn't include any staff time to actually approve the citations or go to court or any of those other items that go with it. That's all assigned duties to our traffic officer, and none of those costs are captured. Typically, in a speed camera program, your automated enforcement programs, you're looking to at least inside of the, of the, of the revenue from those machines, pay for the contract that we use to, to pay the vendor and any employee staff time that's used to work on that program. In the case of our red light camera, that's the case, but our speed camera is, is not, is not a program that's functioning at that level. That's why we, we need to do a, a deep dive into the program and come back to you with some substantial recommendations. Some of our camera locations generate very few, if any, citations. And the idea is that each unit would pay for itself because there is a fixed monthly cost that goes with each camera that's out there.
Units that aren't producing citations actually mean that there aren't people speeding in those locations. So, you know, a program like this needs to be recalibrated from time to time because it is about public safety and it's not about revenue.
Absolutely. The, the other thing I'll just note to you while we're talking about automated enforcement is line 76, which is the red light camera expenses at $312,600. This was entered in prior to the enactment of our new contract with them. So we anticipate about a $22,000 savings in that line. So we think next year's expenses should come in about $290 rather than at the $312 that's currently listed in the book.
Appreciate that. Let's see, would you, these other questions?
Speed hump's question we didn't quite answer.
We did, we did not. It does build on the question, on the statement from the chief that we want to revisit all of our, our speed camera locations and find where does it make sense for my traffic control and speed control process to put them. Should that not be, should that be a site that is not considered for a speed camera? We can, then do a speed study for a potential speed hump or some other traffic diet intervention at that location.
Yeah, and maybe some simple striping or something. It's a speed hump. I think what happens, what Mr. King has suggested is cars are going down the road and they don't realize that there's a traffic circle coming, so they hit the traffic circle.
And some of that could be, could be resolved by painting the interior circle so that it's reflected paint. So I'll discuss it with the team, see what kind of intervention strategy we'll do.
Pretty good.
As the chief was talking about a cost savings on the red light camera expense going down from $212, we did become aware after the budget was initially presented to council of an increase in our body worn camera contracts. That's going to go up from $85,000 to $150,000, and that's paid once in September. It is a big jump. It is a $65,000 impact to our budget that we have to absorb somewhere in our budget, add to our budget.
Is that because of the storage or is it because of the equipment?
Chief, do you want to?
It's twofold. Sorry, sir. It is, it is a result of our current contract expiring. They will provide new cameras and new equipment that come with the contract, but the storage fees are, are quite substantial now. You know, the one thing, for better or worse, that they're, they're mandatory in the state of Maryland now? So you have to do business with somebody. And, and so I think all the manufacturers and vendors know that we are by law obligated to have a program and so therefore, pricing. I, I've talked to other jurisdictions that, that are in the same boat we are and the contract cost is all doubled. So that's, it's, the upside is the program that we have is, is working. It works well. The, the data storage is all good. Everything works like it's supposed to, and we've invested heavily in Axon and their products, and the storage comes with it. And I think as an organization, we knew going in that it's kind of like a cell phone. You, you pay the monthly on it, but the system works. And so that's, that's the key, is that the system works and, and we're, we're pretty satisfied with the product that we have.
Thank you.
So in, in short, I'm sorry, I'm sure you'll see a couple budget adjustments that we just need to make because we now know the full cost of some of these items.
Yeah, and you know, as a result of these work sessions and the discussions that we've had, you know, in some cases, we've picked up a typo or there's been a change. So can we expect to get an updated, updated numbers or some sort of a listing of modifications before the, before the next council meeting? Not this one. We have a review of the, the budget coming up in three weeks?
May 15th. For the May 15th review session, we plan to provide a set of documents, one that includes corrections to the text that have no impact on the budget and others are budget adjustments with impact. And so council will...
Sort of needs that information in order for us to, to shape our thinking?
Yes, there's a few, a few reports that the city treasurer prepares for council as part of that process.
Very good. Thank you. So there's a couple of...
We have a couple, two more comments from Kathy Legendra. Question for the chief, how many patrol officers are there per squad minus the corporals and sergeants? And I think the, the second part of that is what has changed between fall of 2023 and now that you no longer need additional staff? I believe an increase of two additional patrol officers per squad is necessary to adequately cover all sections of Green Belt and leave the corporals and sergeants to be available to do their assigned duties.
So the, a day-evening patrol shift is six officers. That includes a corporal, a sergeant, and then four police officers, whether they be MPO corporal or MPO police officer rank.
And the, the question about the increasing the number of patrol officers per squad?
Not sure I necessarily have an answer. I mean, you know, it's, it's a, like I said earlier, it's kind of a walking on the edge of a sheet of paper, right? It is enough, enough. But at the same time, you know, as we talked about with the, with cost, right? What is the, if, if I say, well, I'd like five people, right? There's an associated cost that comes with that. And so in fitting into our, our allocated funding, you know, this is where we are.
Okay. Thank you. Let's see. And finally, Mr. Orleans, you have a comment?
Yes, thank you. I'm not familiar with the statute that the chief and the city manager refer to, but apparently I'm given to understand that the requirement, the statutory requirement that body camera video be preserved is now being exploited by the various vendors that sell to municipalities and the counties presumably the body camera system. There may be overcharging for storage. And I don't know, it sounds to me that's what was said. If that's accurate, this is a perfect example where MML and Mako should be assertively telling the legislature next year that there ought to be a wholly public entity which will store at cost, which is presumably a lot less than is being charged the city of Green Belt at other municipalities and, and the counties for such storage. And that part of this problem would be resolved. I don't know if anything that I heard is fully accurate. I don't know. My suggestion is, is fully worthwhile, but it was, that's based on what I heard. That should be considered.
Thank you, thank you. So I think there's a nuanced response. I, I think we had locked into a contract. How long was the contract for?
So we originally entered into it in 2017, which is when we locked in the prices. And it was a five-year contract. About halfway through in 2020, we renegotiated that contract to get an upgrade on equipment, locked in the same prices. So now we're looking at pricing that we are paying today from 2017 that is now with our contract coming to renew, 2017 pricing versus 2024 pricing.
Yeah, and I'm bringing that up because on the legislative side of things, that was the, the, the cost of storage, body cam storage, was a legislative priority for the Prince George's County Municipal Association three years ago. So we benefited from being locked into a long-term contract. So hopefully, this contract that we're renewing on or negotiating will also be five years or...
It's a, it's a five-year contract. Obviously, it'll come before council later in the fall to renew. In January of 2025 will be the effective term date, which is obviously in this fiscal year. So we're planning for it now. Some of the things that are, it's not just the same program that we have now that we're just paying more for. In, in this new program, a lot of technology has developed since then. So the department is getting all new technology in regards to body cameras, the TASER weapons, which are less than lethal, designed to mitigate those situations where you necessarily want to use less force and don't want to, you know, jump to lethal force. It's an upgraded platform that is much more successful, much more, when I say user-friendly, a higher success rate of mitigating that without causing injury to the individual that's being used on as well as the officer, as well as virtual reality training system used for de-escalation and crisis intervention training for officers. So there's a lot more that has developed that's part of that package now in addition to the software upgrades for redaction, which, you know, just today, trying to redact that video to publish publicly, went back to the station and, and took over an hour just to do a 50-second clip, the, the newer software, which we're, we're demoing later this week.
It's a very strict protocol that you have to follow in preparing a, the public release of, it's spelled out in the general orders quite specifically, is it not?
Yeah, it's spelled out in the general orders as well as state laws to what we can and can't release in those. And as well as, you may remember, we've upgraded the time or retention policy for all of our, our body camera video, our in-car camera video, as well as our interview room camera video. So while we used to keep video for non-evidentiary video, we kept for basically a year. We're now keeping everything a minimum of four years. So you can imagine the increase in storage amounts that all of our video has, has caused. So, but it's, it's definitely a program that we would not be able to sustain in-house, either with our own resources within the police department or the city's IT staff. It would, it would require not only hardware and resources to run the program, but additional staff members to, to administer on a daily basis, so.
Well, staying on the topic of technology, you know, I was just talking to the city manager in our weekly meeting this afternoon, and we were talking about the upcoming agenda on the next council meeting. There's a couple of investments in technology that are going to be made as a result of American Rescue Plan funding for, for radios. And that's to the tune of, what, $250,000? These are, ARPA money sort of freed up, allowed us to do these, these investments that were deferred in technology. So, you know, the question, well, do we need more people? What do we need to, to keep Green Belt safer? And sometimes it's officers, it's civilianization, it's technology. If you look at how technology is impacting, impacting so many sectors of, of our world right now, we, we have to make these investments in order to, to be efficient. How much was?
It's over $200,000 for the radios. The, for next council meeting, council's going to see a lot of contracts come through related to technology. There's going to be the radios, which allow encryption, the trailer cameras, the license plate reader contracts, so three big contracts.
So for a total, that's probably going to be close to a half a million dollars in contracts.
The, the radios alone are $263,000. And the, the LPR camera system, it's about 12 sites, about 20 cameras. That's about 160. And then the, the trailer cameras are...
This one, we're proposing just one additional camera. We have applied for grant funding for, from the state for two additional cameras. So we're asking council to fund one, and we hope to, fingers crossed, we'll get the two, funding for two more trailer cameras from the state.
Right. So when, when you're talking about personnel, you know, the, the starting salary and benefits might be 95, then the body worn camera and, and car and uniform might be another 40 or 50. Then there's this technology, the other technology that we're investing in, cameras and, and radios and other equipment. And that, that's all a part of, of making sure that our police officers have everything that can equip them to be as efficient and effective, the people that we have. If we don't make those investments, then we're really not doing right by our public safety employees.
Absolutely. The license plate reader technology is a good example of that augmented or enhancements to monitoring and surveillance. The, the system will read license plates of vehicles coming in and out of the city and will, when it picks up a stolen vehicle, it will alert the police department that X vehicle, stolen vehicle entered our, our corporate limits, and that would alert the officers to be on the lookout for that vehicle. Versus the way we need to do it now is that an officer would need to observe a vehicle committing offense to run the plate to determine if the vehicle is stolen.
Yeah, and with the, with the camera systems and actually the, the proposal of allowing the park rangers to, to view monitoring the parks, people going in and out of the parks, a situation where 500 people suddenly converge on Shrum Hills Park, you know, that, that's something that, that... Hills Park, you know, that, that's something that, that a camera just seeing the number of people coming in and out would really be helpful.
It would be, and that's, you know, one of the things that we're looking at long-term. We have the, the trailer camera there now that's as a temporary solution and long-term, you know, a more fixed solution at that location.
These are difficult challenges, you know, it's, it's a, it's a new world and, uh, these groups converging, you know, the social media, five, 600 people converge in one location. You have to think creatively, long and hard on what we can do. Hey, let's, uh, let's pivot back to the, uh, to the budget, uh, page 150 on the, uh, revenue sources. I was just wondering, did I skip anything? Uh, any, any new grant opportunities? Uh, any new funding partnerships with the county and the state, uh, at, at the, uh, press conference today? There was representative from the ATF and he was mentioning that they have funding for, uh, programs. So are we looking at any new partnerships, looking at any new grants?
Uh, we're, we're always using the, the state for different grants where they're available, um, particularly when it comes to traffic safety. Uh, we also get grants from the state for training. None of the grants are, are substantially large numbers. They're all generally, um, you know, small, small digits that, that help us with one-off projects.
Any, uh, comments on the revenue down at the management objectives? I was just wondering, I wanted to talk a little bit about this question, what we can do about, uh, recruitment and retention? So we've got the peer, uh, recruitment, uh, program which is still in place, but, but I'm wondering, uh, are there some things that we can do to sweeten the pot a little bit to, for retention? Uh, some sort of accelerator bonuses or something where someone comes in, if, you know, if they've been here for five years, something that would kind of lock in and would help? Maybe it wouldn't have to be financial, maybe there's some other kind of benefits that would, as Mr. Roberts, uh, pointed out, our benefit package is something that has always made service here very attractive.
So retention is a, I'm, I'm not going to say it's a tricky topic, but it can be, um, you know, when an employee becomes dissatisfied could be for a variety of reasons, could be pay and benefits, it could be a workplace issue. One of the, the, the goals that we have is to give everybody an opportunity to try to explore their career as much as possible. Uh, being a, um, a smaller municipal agency, you know, our full-time assignments, our patrol, um, community policing and investigations, somebody may want to do something that's not in that, those areas and they may look for that, you know, if you want to, uh, get into a gang unit or something like that, we don't necessarily offer that. So we try to offer, um, part-time roles, um, in whether it be our, our special policing unit, our SAT team, um, a variety of other ERU. So we, we have a number of different kind of ancillary assignments that people can take on to continue to bolster their career, but we look for ways to give people some career fulfillment, uh, because we think that's a big retention thing. The other piece that, that we think is big retention is, is just a management philosophy. We try to manage for people. Um, and so looking at our decision-making process and how it affects our staff, uh, before making decisions and trying to keep, keep everybody's best interest and the best interest of the organization first, uh, as we make sort of life-altering decisions for people, whether they transfer a shift, um, you know, you know, day work, night work, midnights, permanent shifts. Uh, so we really try to work with, uh, our, our FOP and the officers in terms of making those good decisions, in terms of how they impact people. And then, you know, lastly, you know, is the financial piece. And so we, we do for all of the incoming employees, they get that, that hiring bonus, which is paid out over four years. Uh, and so we think that for the first four years, you know, you're, you're getting that additional stipend every year as a check. Uh, what do we do beyond the fourth year? Some organizations have, have a yearly retention bonus, uh, and so you get a check for X amount of dollars, um, I know the US Capitol does it. You get a check for $7,500 January 1st, if you choose to remain with the organization for 12 months. If at any point you leave in that 12 months, you owe the organization back $7,500. Right? You, so, so that's there, you take our money, you stay here, you guarantee you're staying here for 12 months. Um, and so that, that is a, you know, something you can look at it. It, all of those things come with dollar figures. Uh, and so what is, what is the price that we, we want to allocate? And before we, we would go too far down that, that road tonight, I would say that we, we do have a CBA that's going to open and that's a, that's a wage and benefit thing that's going to be part of that CBA package. Uh, and so, you know, if we're looking at those kind of incentives, the, the CBA would be the place to, to put those.
Yeah, that's a, that's a good point. So I just brought it up because under, uh, management objectives, your recruitment and retention is such an important piece, you might want to have something to learn about.
Absolutely, and, and the real reality is, is long-term for us, I, I know if, if I have 51 people or 53 people, it's, it's the same budgeted dollar amount, right? Whether eight are in the academy or eight are on the road. But the reality is every time we turn somebody over, yes, we're spending the same amount of money, but for 10 to 12 months, they're in training. So the first full year of, of the employee, they're in, in a variety of training programs, whether it be the academy field training, or their first month out of field training, all of the costs we bear to train them beyond that, uh, the FTO cost, we're paying a second officer to train them, all of the additional training costs that come after the academy. We, we pride ourselves on offering a lot of training, whether in-house or out of the department. And so we spend a lot of money and time training our officers in the first two years. Uh, and then, you know, when somebody, when we bring somebody new in, you know, they're new and, and they're learning. And so, you know, you're in that learning curve and, and what we want to get away from is people always in, having a large segment of the department in a learning curve. And we have a, we have a young police department, we have a really talented group, uh, and we're, we're starting to move beyond that first couple of years for most of the staff, which is good. Um, and we want to maintain it because if, if we were to see four or five of those officers in their three and four-year mark leave the organization, sure, can, can we spend a lot of time and energy recruiting and bring people back in? But we've lost everything we've taught them, we've lost that skillset. So the institutional, so what, where is, where is our money? Like while it might cost us a couple of hu, extra dollars per year to maintain our staff, is that money better spent than constantly recycling and retraining and rehiring? And yes, the dollar amount stays the same, but the product that you're getting, like the first year, we're, is a sunk cost because they're in training, right? So every time we hire somebody new for, for 10 months, they're in the academy and in field training, that salary, that, that 10 months of $96,000 isn't, isn't giving you your money, right? That's, that's just getting them ready to start their career.
Yeah, we've got, uh, eight, eight officers coming in from the academy. I don't know how many will wash out. That's a challenge too, we, we.
Yeah, we do lose occasionally, uh, one or two, uh, out of the academy process. Last year, I think two didn't make it? Yeah, last year two didn't make it through the academy. So we do, we do see that happen occasionally. Um, we try to prepare them as, as well as we can in advance of the academy. Typically we will hire somebody at least a month before the academy starts and spend time sort of pre-training them, getting them ready to go for an academy environment before they even get there, uh, to try and increase their chance of success.
That's good sense.
Summer at the Naval Academy.
Exactly.
Getting into, yeah.
Hey, I just want to pivot quickly and cover a couple of things on, on page 151. So, uh, you know, thefts and auto thefts are way up. So, uh, what, what do you see in the trend? Is this, is this leveling off? Is it going down? I mean, I understand that Kia has, they've made some modifications to their ignition system, so i- is this leveling off? And also on the page, it, it's just, uh, performance measures, it, it doesn't, we've got up to 2023 on here, so is, is the trend with the off of auto thefts?
So these are full year 2023 statistics, that's why that they're UCR statistics, so they, they go calendar year, not fiscal year. So right now, we, we have seen a, a decrease in overall crime of about 25% to this point of this year. I say that, you know, knowing that anything can change. Where we have seen an increase though, uh, is in, in our robberies. Uh, that is up quite substantially from this time last year. The thefts, the auto thefts are down. And, and keep in mind, if I tell you that things are down about 25%, and we look at last year's number, which was a historic high, even being down from that number, we're still high, if that makes sense to you. So, so yes, things are, are better this year, right? We have seen a decrease, um, but that still leaves us above that 22 number. So we'll, we'll, if, if the current trend continued, you know, we'd be less than last year's numbers, but still more than 2022.
Right, and so, uh, and just looking at the arrest, uh, the juvenile arrests, they're just off, well, they weren't off the chart, they were kind of close to 2019, but what, what are you thinking is going to happen this year? Is it going to stay high, is it going to go higher?
I, I don't think it will go higher, I think it will continue to remain the same. Um, I mean, they, this legislature enacted some, some minor changes to the Juvenile Justice Act, uh, but we'll see when, when the bill actually kicks in, what sort of overall impact it has.
So I'll just continue. So, uh, the, the clearance rate, what are some of the, what are some of the factors influencing the clearance, uh, rate drop? It's, it's, uh, around 9%.
I, I think the biggest factor is the increase. Like, like there's so many more cases. If that makes sense, you know, you're, you, you have, you know, double the number of crime that we had last year. So if you're still closing 9%, it's actually more cases, but the percentage continues to remain low because the volume of, of incidents is so high.
Does make sense. So how, how are you coping with the backlog?
Our detectives continue to work on all the cases, um, where there are abilities to follow up and close a case. Uh, it's, it's just, you know, one at a time. There's, there's not necessarily, uh, you know, a magic answer to it.
The challenge is that, that, that increase is in crimes that are very difficult to solve, your thefts, your theft from autos especially, which are, uh, 99% of the time, we have no suspect description, it occurred sometime overnight, we don't know, have anything to go off of. So normally that case becomes suspended, which counts against our clearance rate. So, you know, homicides, rapes, robberies, serious assaults and burglaries, much higher probability of solving those cases, those thefts and especially theft from autos and auto thefts, those go majority unsolved, so.
Found, uh, you know, burned up down in southeast someplace and.
Just, you know, has that dramatic effect on that overall clearance percentage?
I should have asked this question, Vance, but how many, uh, can you quantify, uh, the, the number of, uh, cases or the, the backlog or the number of cases?
You say backlog?
Well, just with the 9% clearance rate, uh, as opposed to previous years when it was 17, 20, 22%, that, that implies that, uh, with the increasing number of cases, so.
So basically the way that the, the clearance rate is calculated is you look at the total number of crimes and then you take the total number of those crimes that were either closed by arrest or where we identified a suspect, but for, uh, either the victim not wishing to continue prosecution or the state's attorney not prosecuting, that's considered closed by exception. So you take those numbers and that's where you get it from. So any other case that all the leads are exhausted, so a car is broken into, no suspect information, no leads to follow, that case gets suspended and then is just dormant, basically, until any information comes up on that case.
Appreciate that, Mayor Protem.
Yeah, just because we've been talking to other departments about what, you know, what, what are the most useful performance measures? Can we improve these performance measures? Given what you're just talking about, the clearance rate, I wonder if it'd be worth, if the system can tell us separating out some of those different clearance rates because, um, because if it really is the, the theft or the auto theft that, that are, that are very hard to solve, especially those thefts as you're talking about, separating those out from some of the more serious, you know, homicide, rape, robbery, some of those things, that hopefully we have a better clearance rate with those. So just thinking about for future budget years, separating, separating some of the crimes out, um, to, to better tell the story of what, with, what we're, what we're clearing and what we're not and why we're not.
Yeah, and that would be helpful, especially when the ones that are not, the decision is made not to prosecute by the state's attorney or the witnesses are not cooperating or, or that would be helpful to know. I don't know if it's possible. Uh, so just a couple more, uh, questions. So calls for services, service are way up, police reports are way up. So are, are these trends going to continue, people?
I, at, at this point, I, I don't see them not continuing. I think we will be down a little bit, like I said, but I don't think we will be down, you know, to, to 2019 levels. We, we will continue to be around the 2022 level.
I guess it's a good thing, uh, people calling in for service and maybe, uh, the fact that they are actually following up with a police report as opposed to people just not even bothering to, to do that, especially when it comes to, uh, cars, people getting windows broken and things taken out of cars, those are just about impossible to solve unless someone sees something. So with, uh, motor vehicle accidents and the traffic summonses and parking tickets, uh, kind of along the lines of what Mayor Protem was just saying, uh, with the, uh, parking enforcement, I've gotten some resident complaints about the amount of time it takes before a vehicle is, uh, tagged and towed. So what, what is the, uh, what's the criteria or what, what's the standard in terms of determining when, when a vehicle needs to be removed or whatnot?
So typically we try to, um, for non-critical parking violations, we try to work with the individual, if we can identify the owner, find out why the vehicle's in the condition it is, if it's inoperable, try to give them the opportunity or, or give them some means to help rectify the situation, usually starting with a warning, again, if it's a non-life-threatening situation. As far as, um, if we do have to tag a vehicle to have it towed, it's 48 hours, uh, 48 hours from the time that we tag that vehicle to the time it's removed, unless it's a, um, uh, violation that can be towed immediately, such as a fire lane violation. One piece of good news is our traffic officer recently did have success with state highway getting the no parking signs under the bridge there on 201 where the trucks park.
Yes.
Um, so again, that, that's a difficult situation trying to mitigate, you know, uh, our residents that drive trucks need someplace to park and trying to balance, you know, getting them someplace safe, but also keeping the roadway safe and clear from, from the clutter. So we are making progress there and, and trying to work individually with them. So, um, yeah, it, it really depends, but again, we try to take a, an educational and, and helpful response first with the parking violations, um, unless it's something critical that has to be acted upon immediately.
Appreciate that, people run into problems sometimes. So when, when the red tag or there's a red thing goes on somebody's car, they've got two days basically, orange sticker?
Just tagged and it let them know that they have 48 hours. It also has a phone number that they can call, um, to, for, you know, if it's something that needs to be, you know, worked out or mitigated.
See, I was curious about the traffic summonses, so what are they for? Is, are there a lot of, uh, speeding, uh, reckless driving, modified mufflers, racing? So any, can you give us any additional?
It's a variety. I'd have to, I'd have to go through on our, our data dashboard, I think, and, and take a look at what the, the highest percentage is, is. Um, I don't, uh, I don't honestly know. Do you happen to know offhand what the, the highest?
I, I think it might be traffic control device, but that's my only guess, yeah, stop sign.
Yeah, yeah, and, and thanks for bringing up the data dashboard. So is that up and running more or less?
The, the traffic dashboard's operational, yeah. We, we've had a little bit of a hiccup getting this year's data in. The one thing that, uh, we, we had a transition in employees at the end of last year, um, and then there was a, a breakdown in the, essentially the pathway that moves the data, uh, and we've gotten that corrected with Ezra, so everything should be up and running.
Okay, so you can go to the, uh, police department, uh, website page and from there there's a link on the left side to the, uh, data dashboard and you can actually see the breakdown, geographical breakdown of where incidents have taken place and the types of incidents. Now I'm going to have to go look for that because it's been a little while since I checked. Mr. Roberts?
Uh, just a point of order, you've used your three to five minutes, so, um, it's time that we really should move on. Thank you. You know, you don't get to go on for 15 minutes because you're the mayor. You get the same amount of time as everyone else, I'm sorry.
Thank you, thank you.
And it's 10:15 and I'm, I'm, you know, ready to go.
I know, I'm sleepy. So that does pretty much wrap up all my questions. Anyone else? I saw there's a couple of questions from the public. Jay Davis?
I would love to make some comments here, but I'm going to not make some comments with that last, um, comment. Uh, Jay Davis, Greenbelt East, I know. On the performance measures, just for possible suggestion, uh, I know that the DUI arrests have increased. I've been looking at the police logs and it's not mentioned here. So if you could, I mean, you talk about, um, traffic summons and parking tickets, maybe you could have DUI as one of your, um, performance measures. You have motor vehicle accidents, but it might be of interest to council to know how many, uh, accidents involve a bicyclist or a pedestrian. You have motor vehicle accidents, but it might be of interest to council to know how many, uh, accidents involve a bicyclist or a pedestrian, uh, because that might involve some safety issues. And the only other thing that I could suggest, and I know that we were trying to compress the budget, so it was less pages. And I must admit, the police, the, uh, public safety, uh, section was much shorter.
Slightly to the point.
Quite a bit shorter. But one thing that maybe people would be interested in is some of the special operations or the special parts of the police department, such as public information. I would love to know what's going on there. School resource officer, you know, what do they do and what, if they had any issues? Parking enforcement should probably have some mention. Community policing, what are they doing? And the crisis intervention team, that's a, a program that I think that we should highlight and be included in our budget because I think it's a very important amenity that we have added to our police department. And it's helped a great deal with some of our mental health issues. I've noticed that there's been quite a bit of mental health diversion m- mentioned in the police logs. So, um, just suggesting that would probably take maybe an extra page or two to have those sections described. But generally speaking, I just wanna thank the police department for all that they have done during this past year. Their presence has been very noticeable, especially during some of our special events, Labor Day and, and Fourth of July. It's, it's very calming and very soothing to know that you all are there. And, uh, I do see the cars go around. Uh, so I, I do notice more now that I have a little bit more time to watch that, uh, things are being taken care of very carefully. Thank you very much.
Expired registration, that's the, that's on the top. That's the, that's the top of the list, followed by failure to obey properly placed traffic control device instructions. So see?
I was, I was, I was just a little off.
These temporary Virginia tags, I'm seeing a lot of them. Is, is that included in that?
Uh, they would be under registration somewhere. If, if it's a violation, you, you, you may not even know it's a violation if it's got a, a temporary registration plate on the car.
Yes, they're paper thing. It looks like people can run them off on their laser printer.
Stop giving them ideas.
They may have. They do.
Literally do. Mr. Orleans, she had a question?
Well, I have a comment. Bill Orleans, Greenbelt. It was suggested three years ago unsuccessfully, uh, that the collective bargaining, uh, negotiations should be open to the public. We were in a more heated time three years ago, uh, and I would have made this suggestion even if we had not been. But it was, as I say, unsuccessful. Uh, I, I would make the same suggestion again. I, council, I don't think need be amused by this, but I'm sure you will be. I have never, over thirty-five years of arguing with my labor friends and com- and comrades, that all negotiations should be public. I have never convinced one of them, uh, of, to that point of view, uh, but I maintain it. Uh, but absent that, since they're going to be closed, since council's not going to direct this to be the case and there would be problems with the attorney for FOP if council did direct this to be the case, and it would have to go on a long time. Since it's not going to occur, I, I would like to suggest to city management, the departmental leadership. Of course, I don't expect you to agree with me, but I would suggest anyway, that Greenbelt's finest, if I may use that term, it's used elsewhere, should be the finest anywhere. Not because Greenbelt is great, not because I live here certainly, but because somewhere in the United States of America, across the planet, there should be a local police department that are held to the highest standards possible. And in return for holding Greenbelt's police to the higher possible, highest possible standards, I would argue that we ought to offer a much greater offer of the FOP. They may not want it, but we should offer it. The greatest possible, uh, compensation package of any police officer in the United States of America in return for the highest possible adherence to the highest possible standards, which would mean effectively, a good cop in Greenbelt won't make a mistake. And while everybody makes mistakes, if you're a good cop in Greenbelt, you won't make a mistake because you're being paid to think first before you act, which is, I think, leading to the highest po- adherence to the highest possible standard. Anyway, that's my suggestion.
With regards to negotiation, we intend to be fair in, in our negotiations. We're not going to look to undercut, shortchange, or have our officers get the short end of the stick. We're gonna be fair.
Hey, and that's not new. And we do hold our Greenbelt police officers to the highest standard. So we very much, you know, on behalf of council, we very much appreciate all you do. It's, it's been a tough year. There've been crazy things, uh, happening in Greenbelt and the surrounding area, the county and around the country. So, uh, please, you know, we do appreciate everything that you do and wanna make sure that you are whole in terms of the budget, in terms of what you're asking for.
Absolutely. And just to touch on Mr. Orleans' comment about the highest standard, that is Kalia accreditation. We are currently, we function to the highest level of Kalia accreditation there is. And so that process, I think, provides that level of assurance to how we operate.
Thank you so much. Thank you for your service. So, uh, to wrap things up, uh, Wednesday, we have a work session. We'll be talking with, uh, center city HOAs and condo associations. So it's talking with, uh, the manager to make sure that we, we've got folks con- confirmed for Wednesday. And on Thursday, we have a four cities.
Four cities meeting. And next week, we're busy. We have a work session on Monday, Tuesday and Wednesday.
Yeah, and there's a couple of things happening in the city on Saturday.
Busy schedule on Saturday. We have the plant sale, Berwyn Heights, uh, celebration and the fundraiser. Nursery school fundraiser, yes. So at least three events. Oh, and there's the, the Peace and Justice, uh, Coalition meetup at Spring Hill Lake from eleven to one P M.
Yeah, also the GHI bike, uh, committee is meeting at one, uh, rescheduled. The Greenbelt Museum has a program at one o'clock also. And I got an email a couple of hours ago saying the Arthritis Association is having their annual walk-a-thon over at Roosevelt the track at, uh, nine thirty, nine forty-five. So there's too much going on on Saturday. So let's close the work session tonight and thank you, everyone, for attending. Thank you once again for your service. Great work on, uh, on bringing in the suspects on the shooting.